Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Barnstable Planning Board here at Barnstable Town Hall located at 367 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. And we are in the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room located on the second floor. It is now 7:00 PM. The meeting notice has been previously filed with the town clerk in accordance with Mass. General Law. All application materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website or by contacting Karen Pina at karen.pina@town.barnstable.ma.us or calling 508-862-4064. I will now call the meeting to order and we will introduce our board members and staff. My name is Steve Robichaud. And Matt?
Matt Teague, thank you.
Mary?
Mary Barry.
Ray?
Good evening, Ray Sexton.
Bob?
Good evening, Bob Twist.
Tim?
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
Michael?
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
And staff, Jim?
Good evening, Jim Cutford, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Karen?
Good evening, Karen Pina, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Development.
Notice of recording, this meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream at the Town of Barnstable website. Question mark, channel equals one. Public comments, so this is for any general public comment not related to an agenda item this evening. If anybody has any general public comment, again, not related to one of our agenda items this evening, this would be the time to come forward to the podium, state your name and state your comments. Seeing none, we will continue on to our first item this evening, which is an approval-not-required plan. Ray, would you like to take this one?
Mr. Chairman, approval-not-required plan, 518-566 Yarmouth Road. LSLC has submitted an approval-not-required plan entitled "Approval Not Required Plan" for Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Hyannis, Massachusetts dated September 29th, 2023. This is not a public hearing and does not need to be voted on to open or close.
Perfect, thank you, Ray. And we have the applicant with us this evening. If you could simply state your name and please go ahead.
Sure, Attorney Jeff Ford here representing the applicant, 518 and 556 Yarmouth Road, LLC. And I'm also here with Asa Smith from Atlantic Design and Engineers. So in terms of the filing, as indicated, we've applied for an A&R plan for the premier Jeep site. The plan proposes to adjust the center property line that currently divides the Jeep site and the car wash sites. If, I don't know if you've ever been out there, but it runs right down the center. Both parcels are currently improved. They both have the minimum, more than the minimum frontage required. They meet the area. They're, they've got the, their existing paved ways, suitable grades, and they're adequately laid out for the proposed use. Currently, the area is used for parking for the existing Jeep dealership. It'll continue to be used for that, so there's no change in use either. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you so much and great job to your client on this project. The site looks excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks very good. We'll go to the board now for any questions, comments, concerns, starting with Matt. Mary?
All set.
Ray?
Nothing here, Mr. Chairman.
Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
Tim?
All set, thank you.
Michael?
I'm okay, thank you.
And I also have no questions. Ray, we would look for a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we endorse the proposal entitled "Approval Not Required Plan for Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Hyannis, Massachusetts, prepared by Atlantic Design Engineers Incorporated, dated September 29th, 2023, as an approval-not-required A&R plan."
Thank you, Ray. And do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
I vote aye, Mr. Chairman, but do we need to read the findings into the record?
Jim?
Would be appreciated if you...
Absolutely. Ray, could you read the findings into the record?
Do we have a null, not to up the parliament, do we have to null a vote and re-motion?
I modify my motion to include the...
Stand by one sec. Will you do that real quick?
That's, we have to modify the motion and then redo it?
Yeah, so just, just start, we're gonna start for us with a fresh motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ray.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we endorse the entitled, the proposal entitled "Approval Not Required Plan for Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Hyannis, Massachusetts, prepared by Atlantic Design Engineers Incorporated, dated September 29th, 2023, as an approval-not-required A&R plan with the following findings. It does not constitute a subdivision because each of the lots have minimal, minimum required frontage on an existing way, having suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use and the, for the installation of municipal services to serve such, and all materials and conditions of Chapter 801, Article 4, approval-not-required plans have been submitted and are in full compliance."
Excellent, thank you, Ray, and thank you for that, Bob and Tim. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Tim, would you mind taking our next agenda item this evening, which is a special permit?
No problem, one second, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is special permit, SP 2023-004. Nile Moran has submitted a special permit application for 50 Main Street Hyannis, MAP 342, parcel 026, demolition and proposal to construct five residential duplexes. The relief sought by special permit is a reduction in the facade build-out requirements per Section 240-24.1.7B-3C. I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
And do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Matt. All those in favor? Matt? Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The public hearing is open. And if the applicant could please come forward, state their name for the record and have a presentation.
Good evening, John O'Day from Sullivan Engineering Consulting. Here with me is the property owner, Nile Moran. We're here before you this evening to discuss 50 Main Street in Hyannis, which is within the Hyannis District. This is a half, about a half acre parcel that has, is developed with a commercial building, previously used as a doctor's office, I believe. The project as proposed is to demolish that building and construct five duplexes, as is shown on the site plans. The project has been before formal site plan review and we are here before you this evening requesting a special permit as, as discussed from Section 240, 24.1.7B-3C. And that is speaking to the minimum required facade build-out within this district. The district requires an 80% minimum building facade along the street frontage. Our existing lot is, has a width of 85 feet. And so trying to maintain the existing appropriate access and egress from the property, minimum required landscape setbacks from the driveway, property lines and buildings makes it essentially impossible to meet that 80%. And so we are here this evening requesting this relief. I think that's a brief summary of where we're at and we're here to help answer any questions that we can.
Very much appreciate that. Jim, do you have any comments from staff on this before we go to the board for some questions?
Sure. So in your staff report, you'll find a further explanation on the, the application before you. This is in the downtown village zoning district, so a subsection of our downtown Hyannis Village District. The facade build-out requirement is a 80% facade build-out requirement. The applicant, I believe, is proposing a 45% facade build-out. And what is before you is, is on the, I guess, westernmost side is the landscape buffer, minimum requirement, the building that's, follows that, and then buffer driveway, and then again the landscape buffer. So, you know, the, the discussion and the relief here tonight is for the difference between that 80 and 45% build-out along that front facade. And I will remind you, the intent there of the facade build-out is to, to provide for that historic development pattern along Main Street where we bring the buildings closer to Main Street and, and front on that, that main thoroughfare, making it more inviting, inviting to approach and putting the vehicles and, and backyards to the rear. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. And at this time, before we go to public comment, I'd like to go to the board to see if board, the board has any clarifying questions for the applicant or for staff, starting with Matt?
None, thank you.
All right, Mary?
Not at this time, thanks.
And Ray?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate now or later, but...
Please go ahead.
I'd like to, I see that part of the proposal is one affordable unit, housing unit. I'd like to see more than one. This is one of our, our priorities as a board and as a town. And I'd ask that you consider perhaps adding at least one other affordable unit to this otherwise very, I think, great development.
May I speak?
Please. Yes, go ahead.
So I was actually doing nine units to avoid that, the, the simple cost of construction right now. But I did add that 10th unit, so I am trying to assist the town in creating affordable housing. But it would, I apologize, but the cost of current construction almost puts this out of reach as it is. So I am still putting that 10th unit in and allowing that to happen within this project.
That's fair. I, I, I'm kind of putting a marker down here, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to do it at your expense per se, but there is a proposed project at 307 Main Street that's supposed to actually have something on the order of 75% affordable units. So we're trying to encourage, and I understand that times are tough and things are expensive and there are public subsidies for things like this that could be explored. So I, I would ask perhaps that if you haven't to, to check that out. And I know that we have some more expert members of the board that maybe can elucidate on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ray. And my personal opinion would not be to condition this special permit with a requirement for additional affordables, but I do have to say I'm very grateful for what you've said, Ray. It is important to make it known that this board does prioritize affordable units and, you know, it's great to have that on the record. And as Ray mentioned, there are avenues and tools out there, such as the Housing Trust. I'm a member of the CPC and we just granted them another $2.5 million for their very important purpose. So just something to, for all of us to keep in mind and obviously we'll look to hear if the other members of the board have anything to add. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm comfortable with the concept, the project and the massing. I will endorse Ray's comments and your comments about the affordable housing without putting a, drawing a line in the sand on, on this particular project. But I think every time we have the opportunity to, I think we should impress upon applicants and the public for that matter, that when we're talking about special permits, the town's giving something up. And if we're giving something up, we're looking for more than the amount of affordable housing that would be required if we weren't doing a special permit. So as a general rule, I think we can anticipate that we're gonna be asking for more than the required amount of affordable housing on any special permit involving residences. The only issue I had, Mr. Chair, is the application did not include a artist rendition of the facade of the building that's fronting on Main Street. I have seen the drawing which was submitted as part of the site plan proposal and it may be, I've seen it, thanks. And it may be simply because it's essentially a pen and pencil, black and white drawing because that's the nature of what you were submitting it for. But frankly, the facade struck me as a little Spartan for building on Main Street of Hyannis. I mean, this is after all, Main Street. It's the, the principal area where folks coming from the east come down this section of Main Street to get to downtown Hyannis. I might, would, maybe would like to see something that was not in black and white because it might look differently if it was not in black and white. Or something that has more detail around the, on the building to make it more attractive. The building itself is not unattractive, don't let me, don't let me suggest that. It's just where it's located, it's fronting on, on Main Street, I just find it a little Spartan based more than I can see so far. If I had a three-dimensional computer-generated something or color, I might not feel that way. But right now, that's how it strikes me.
Understood, appreciate that, Bob. Thank you. And Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the previous board members on everyone's comments. The only kind of fact-finding question I have is just procedurally, I see that the project had a formal site plan review and I just want to see, was it, applied for a building permit and then had to come back here? And also if this project is in the Hyannis, Main Street, Harbor Front Historic and like three other acronyms, if it's in that district and if it has received that approval or that review yet.
This, this property is not in the Hyannis, Main Street Waterfront Historic District. It has gone through formal site plan review and has been deemed approvable based on the relief sought this evening.
Great, thank you, so that, you answered that question.
It was a great question, Tim. Thank you for that. Michael?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, great. Matt, Mary, anything to add?
It would, it would look nice if we had shutters on that building on six, on, on Main Street. I would be happy with that and that's all.
Mary, anything to add?
Not at this time, I agree with statements made by the board.
I, I do have to agree with, with Matt, especially knowing that it doesn't go to the Historic Commission. Is that something that you'd be willing to look at in, basically in favor of the receipt of the waiver?
Yes, if, if you were to see my project I just finished at 421 West Main Street, that does have above-average finishes and I intend to keep that, this in kind with above-average finishes, including shutters and yes, it will not be an eyesore by any means.
Excellent, okay. I appreciate that. Jim, just procedurally, same thing here, read the findings, reference conditions. Excellent.
Yes, thank you.
Now gonna go to public comment. If anybody has, public hearing is open. If anybody would like to make public comment on this proposal, please come forward at this time to the podium, state your name for the record. Karen, I assume we have a sign-in sheet? Perfect, sign-in sheet, sign your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Get it, Bob?
Second, you got it.
From Bob, second. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The public hearing is closed. Do we have any further deliberation, comments, concerns, questions from the board for the applicant or staff? Ray?
Just a...
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Just a quick procedural question then. In terms of, for example, we just asked about adding shutters and you seem to have addressed that, do we need to incorporate details like that in the proceeding?
I personally would like to see the mention of shutters included in the conditions. Is that correct, Jim? It would be in the conditions, not the findings.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, if you want to condition this approval on any design features that you wish to see and the applicant agrees to, certainly can put it in conditions and staff can review and enforce.
So, Ray, you would reference all conditions included in addition, the additional?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I, I would look at my colleague, Robert, if there was anything else that he had in mind that might get tagged on or not.
Anything else from...
Yeah, no, the only thing, sir, I'm not familiar with, off the top of my head with what kind of finishings you have on the building yet. I think you said it was 421 Main Street, but whatever building you referenced. In addition to shutters, is there something that we should include specifically, I mentioned?
Well, my history is landscape construction, so that will be impressive as well. I intend the front Main Street facing stoop to be stone as, as opposed to the trex which will, will be out back. So my request to you, I guess, would be that this references the front-facing building as opposed to the ones that are not visible from the street.
Right, and that was my concern with my comments to you, is the one front-facing.
Yes, I intend to really make that one an IPCS.
Do you have any type of exterior lighting, lamps beside the doors you're planning on putting in?
It depends on the setbacks from the street and what it allows, really, but if there is, there certainly will be.
There's, there's a lot of light fixtures, everything kind of referenced and, I know it's not in the Hyannis, Main Street Waterfront Historic District, but there is a lot of in there, even going down to colors, light fixtures, landscape plannings, everything. So I don't know if it's a...
Are those, are those recommendations though?
Well, the...
Design guidelines, right?
Well, the guidelines are just kind of recommendations. And then there's the regulation which kind of had a lot to do with the dormer, you know, some size, dimensional things. But, you know, it's pretty traditional, there's like onion lamps and, you know, regular kind of historic paint colors. Is there a way to condition it on its, use the design guidelines?
Let me, let me throw out some language, maybe that'll address your issue. Why don't we, to answer your question, why don't we include it, put the language in the state, the applicant will include shutters, will include a stone, what's the correct word?
Front step stoop.
Step, you know, on the building fronting 50 Main Street and will consult the design guidelines for the downtown historical district for things such as lamps and other attachments.
And colors and things.
I don't mind onion lamps on the structure, but so close to the street just for vandalism and so on, I'd, I'd rather keep the expensive items on the, on the house.
On the building, sure, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
See, I don't think the drawing shows actually lamps on the, either door, so.
Yes, they will be.
Is that way, would, does that work?
Certainly does for me. I appreciate that. Bob, would you be able to make the motion?
Sure. Would you like me to read the findings as well?
We'll read the findings and before Bob makes that motion, is there any final comments from the board?
Just, just one question, I'm assuming this went through site plan review and, because it's on the Wellhead, right? Wellhead District?
Yes, correct, it went through site plan review.
Yep, all set, thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Tim?
So we have that condition, what, what you said, Jim, you can put that in the condition that they get? Okay.
You have to do the other one, so you want me to read these?
Well, I have to do, I have to do the next thing.
You want me to read these?
You can take this one, that's good.
Tim, you're too kind.
You owe me big.
Yeah. Well, you did the solar one.
Yeah, right.
We're still all in debt.
Bob, take your time.
Sure, let me find the... So I move to approve with conditions, special permit, SP 2023-004, 50 Main Street with the following findings and conditions. These findings and conditions are from the staff report dated, dated October 19th, 2023, beginning on page three, I'm sorry, beginning on page two. Draft findings, one, the property located is 50 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. Hyannis show, as shown on Assessors' Map, 342, parcel 026, in the downtown village zoning district and Wellhead Protection Overlay District. Two, the applicant and owner, Nile Moran, seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 240-24.1.7B is in Bravo, three, C is in Charlie, of the Barnstable zoning code. The applicant proposes a 45% building frontage build-out where 80% minimum is required. Three, the planning board finds that the issuance of the special permit is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan and that the development meets the following criteria. A, creates housing opportunities for persons or households of all income levels. B, orients both residential entry to face public streets. C, the development provides for the minimization of curb cuts and driveways, excuse me, on Main Street through a shared driveway for all units. Four, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section 240-24.1.7B is in Bravo, three, C is in Charlie, allows the planning board to reduce facade build-out requirements by special permit. Five, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Six, a site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The conditions of informal and formal site plan review shall be incorporated by reference as conditions of the special permit. Seven, the application proposes 10 residential dwelling units. Therefore, the developer shall provide one affordable housing unit in accordance with Chapter 9, Affordable Housing, Article 1, inclusionary affordable housing requirements, and has condition further herein. The draft conditions are numbers one through eight as appearing on pages three and four of the staff report and adding to that a condition number nine, which I wrote somewhere and then not lost. Number nine, the applicant will provide shutters on the facade of the building. Is it all buildings or just the one facing Main Street?
Front-facing.
Building facing 50 Main Street, shall provide a stone front steps or stoop on the building, fronting Main Street. And for things such as lights on the buildings and other types of fine finishes, will consult the architectural guidelines set forth for the downtown Hyannis District as a guideline of types of things the board prefers.
Okay.
Is that close enough, Jim?
We got the thumbs up from Jim, that sounded great, Bob, appreciate that. And do we have a second? Is that Michael?
That was me.
Thank you, Tim. That was Tim. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto our next item this evening, regulatory agreement. Tim, if you could read that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is regulatory agreement. Shoestring Properties LLC has submitted an application for a regulatory agreement, RA number 2023-02, Dockside Condominiums, 110 and 115 School Street, Hyannis, MAP and Parcels 326 and 121 and 125. I believe the meeting is still open, so we, oh, we need to...
Yeah, the hea, hearing is still open.
Hearing's still open, so we're good.
Yep, all good, left the hearing open. Thank you, Tim, for that. Attorney Kenny, welcome. If you would like to kind of give us an update, if you have one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name's John Kenny, an attorney with a law office in Centerville. Want to come before you again tonight, representing Shoestring Properties LLC. Here with me this evening is Stuart Bornstein, the manager of the LLC, Dan Ogiloh from Down Cape Engineering, the project engineer, and Mike Nie from Janap Architects, the architect on the project. Excuse me, my allergies have been killing me this week. The, at the last meeting, there were four items, I believe, that the board asked for further input on. And I don't know how you want to address them, Mr. Chairman, I can go all through, through all four of them or I can go through one at a time and take board questions as I go through each one.
A pause after each one would be great, so you have to start with the first and we'll go from there.
Great, the first is the requested waiver from the Hyannis, Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission. And we're asked to give an analysis as to why this board can grant a waiver from the requirement of a certificate of appropriateness for that project or a second certificate of appropriateness from that committee for this project. The HMS WHDC was created through Chapter 41 of the General Town Ordinances. It is a general town ordinance, it is similar to Chapter 240, the zoning ordinance, you can grant... can grant waivers to the Chapter 240, and you can grant waivers to Chapter 241, and in fact, we found on quick, quick research, four instances in which waivers were granted. The first is the Harborview Hotel, that's the four-story addition to the hotel down at Ocean Street, and I don't know how many of you remember how everybody felt that that one was going to ruin the harbor front area and all of that. It's four stories, and when's the last time you drove by and actually noticed that it's four stories? I never noticed it, but they requested and were granted a waiver for the requirements of a certificate of appropriateness for the design of that. Now, full disclosure, they did note in the decision, the applicant met with the HDC, and I'm assuming that meant the Main Street District and not the Historic District Committee, I'm assuming it meant the Main Street Waterfront District, and got a positive recommendation on its elevation plans, which had been reviewed by this board, but they were granted a waiver of the requirement of a certificate of appropriateness, and that's down around the corner here on Ocean Street, directly across the harbor from our proposed project. The next one was Sea Captain's Row, which is on Pleasant Street, which is around the corner and up the street from this project. They were granted a waiver from the requirements of a certificate of compliance with no questions asked. I believe that, that project went through this board in one evening, they were given waivers related to affordable housing, parking, and in particular, the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Committee requirement of a certificate of appropriateness. Next was the Granby Highland Project on School Street, right up the street from this project. That went through informal review, I happen to have been the attorney in that project, it was not developed, but it went through informal review only, and did not, was not required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. And the fourth one was the Ruth Russia Trust, right down on Ocean Street, again, at 111 and 105 Ocean Street. That also went through informal review by the Waterfront Historic District Committee, and they were not required to get a certificate of appropriateness. This project did go before the, the Waterfront Historic District Committee, was granted a certificate of appropriateness, it was an appeal by an abut, and it was upheld on appeal. Those took place on February 16th of 2022, for the Ocean's certificate of appropriateness, and it was upheld on appeal on April 26th, 2022. There have been minor changes to the plans at the request of this board. If you read the Historic District Appeal, the chairwoman appeared in her individual capacity, not as a chairwoman, spoke against the decision by her, by her board, and suggested that since there was a porch added, it needed to go back to them, and they could add the porch if it was approved by the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Committee. So each, according to the chairwoman, it appears each time we come before you and you request a change, we're going to go back. So what if we go through this process, and what if you were to send us back, and we go back and get, get approved by the Waterfront Historic District Committee, we come here and you approve us, we go to the town council and they request a couple of changes, just as this board did, do we have to start over again and go back? That's not how this process is supposed to work. Chapter 168 empowers you to negotiate the, the qualifications or requirements of a regulatory agreement. The next step is the town council, they have the authority also to further negotiate, and then it goes on recommendation to the town manager for his signature, and he can make minor adjustments, but it's this board and the town council that are empowered by our ordinances to make the decisions as it relates to regulatory agreements. There is nothing in this process prevents the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Committee from taking the plans, reviewing them, and issuing a letter, maybe taking a vote on those plans, and issuing a letter to this board for guidance. That's the way the process should work, similar to a 40B, they should be allowed to have input, but it should come through this board, not having to jump back and forth to them every time there's a change in the plans. So with that being said, I think I've beaten that one to death, and I'll take any questions the board may have.
Appreciate that, thank you. A pause for the board. Any comments, questions at this time, this moment?
I just want to thank you, Attorney Kenny, for clarifying that, I think it's important for the record to have a, kind of a historical log of how this process has gone in the past, and there's, again, my concern is in the future, they open this up, they go, you know, what are we doing? Information like this is very helpful to, to us in terms of making a decision, thank you.
Yeah, well said, Matt, appreciate that. Any other board members with anything at this point? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The next one was the stormwater report, and we've supplied, updated civil set with additional information regarding the stormwater treatment in the Dockside Stormwater Report, and I'll leave that to Dan Ojala. Dan, can you quickly address that? We did actually some additional testing at the request of one of the abutters, the Steamship Authority, and Dan, if you can address how stormwater is being treated and what's been being proposed.
And Dan, before you get started, Jim, do you want to just pull, or actually, I think you have the mouse, love to see what you have in front of Dan, right there on the screen for everyone. Just the overhead plan, perfect, thank you.
So, again, for the record, Dan Ojala with Down Cape Engineering, I'm a civil engineer and also a land surveyor, and helping steward out with the redevelopment of the Dockside Inn. The stormwater is, per the town regulations, a state-of-the-art system, generally, when you're talking about stormwater, you concern yourselves principally with parking lots, where you get some runoff with, you know, brake dust and oil and so forth. In this particular case, all the parking, with the exception of just a couple of spaces, is below grade, we handle that with a state-of-the-art oil-water separators with coal-lacing plates, so that's under 10 parts per million oil that would ever enter the, the town system in the rare event that there was any kind of a problem with one of the vehicles. The majority of the site is clean roof runoff, that you're allowed to infiltrate directly into the ground, we're blessed here on the Cape with one of the finest sand and gravel aquifers anywhere in the country, we did extensive test pits, we checked the, the infiltration rate of the soils, it's the highest rate class possible. The subsurface water goes through a deep-sump-hooded catch basin that will separate some of the oil, then goes through a secondary deep-sump-hooded manhole to further, further separate any of the suspended solids, so you get about a 44% TSS removal prior to infiltration, and then it goes into a standard infiltration trenches, which are set down in the deep sand and gravel aquifer, but it's still well above because we're blessed with a high site above the groundwater table, so you get some additional treatment there as the, as the water goes down through the aquifer. As John mentioned, we did get a little bit of a stress test from the neighbors, the Steamship Authority was concerned, went over all the calculations, and we did make a few adjustments and some final, fine tuning to that about a year ago for them, so that's carried through onto this plan. So everything should be up to snuff, we've got the phosphate and nitrogen removal, the TSS removal, all the things that the state stormwater management and the local guidelines require, and it's a, it's a good and robust system.
Okay, thank you for that. Attorney Kenny, anything to add before?
No, that's way out of my league, we'll take any questions the board may have.
No, certainly appreciate that explanation. Any board members have any comments, questions for Mr. Ojala? Ray?
Just a, a quick, a quick question, Dan, I think you already answered this, but I don't remember the, the response. What, what percent of the site is actually, I guess, impermeable?
Sure. The, the amount actually went up with the latest zoning, you can go up to 90% now. The west parcel, which is to the left on the sheet, is 76.7%, and the east is 76.0, so they're both beneath the new 90% allowable. But again, all that is treated and put on site, right through and including a 100-year event.
Thanks, Dan.
Great, anybody else at this point? Okay, Attorney Kenny, go ahead.
Okay, the third issue was a question regarding the elevations and the height, and how that was calculated, and I'll leave that to Dan and Mike to respond to. We did submit updated plans from the architect with text explaining it, but maybe, Dan, you can address it?
Sure, I'll take a crack at it. So it's, it's actually nice, the new zoning lines up with the IBC, the International Building Code now, and so you only have to look at the finished grade all around the building. So what we do with that is we establish the grade plane, and so you take every 10 feet, you take a spot grade all the way around the building, six feet off the building, and you add all those numbers up, say there's 100 grades and divide by 100, that's your, your, your average natural finished grade, and then you take the measurement up to the midpoint of the highest roof, and the distance between the grade plane and that is your, your building height. So specifically, on the west building, the building height is 58.58 feet, and I use, as is conventional with engineering, decimal feet, that'd be around six and a quarter inches or so, if you're going to take out the standard numeric ruler. And then on the east building, we're 60.08, which is round, right around 60 foot, one inch on the east building. So that's the height from the average finished grade around the building to the midpoint of the upper roof, which is how you get folks to find it, you'd add probably two or three feet to get to the tippy-top ridge, and that would not include any little, you know, spires or cupolas type things, which is typical of excluding those from the height calculation. So that lines up nicely with IBC, and it's important, too, because these do need to be mid-rise buildings, now that we're a story less, it's, it's much less important, but nonetheless, it's nice that the new zoning lines up with the building code, and it's a consistent measurement now.
Attorney Kenny, anything else on that?
No, we'll take any questions the board may have.
Yep, anyone, questions, comments at this juncture? Tim?
I have one question for Dan, and, so I know we have all the plans submitted, but is there an approximation of the difference in existing grade from, say, South Street to the southern portion of these parcels? You know, what is that kind of differential? You know, if it is an average of the grade around, you know, we kind of have two extreme ends of South Street, and then where it should be tapering down towards the abutters and the Steamship, I think parking lot right south there?
Yeah, so, you know, that's, it's, it's a, it's a sloping site to some extent, I think, speaking in general terms, South Street is low on the west side and rises up pretty much to the first floor level on the east side, so you've got a gradient there, School Street comes from, let me get the, the grades exactly, just so, you know, we don't underestimate or overestimate them, but the lowest side would definitely be on the west, where you've got that elevation, maybe 13 is the, is the lowest right against us. But on the, on the road, the first floors are about four feet above the, the grade plane, that is set, the, we had to cut the hill a little bit on the east side, the highest point is just a little bit east of where we are here, so we, we cut down and introduced a retaining wall there, those grades go up to about 31 and change, and then you'll recall that there was an old, old hotel on the west side, and there's a big drop-off where the back wall of that hotel was, and then it goes down a little bit more to the Steamship lot, so that goes all the way to about elevation 12, 13, whereas the road crowns at about 27. So, right now, again, west to east, there's, there's a pretty good grade up to the intersection, and then maybe only about another three or four feet higher as you head to the east, you come up School Street from the intersection a few feet, from 24 to 27, and then as you headed east across the Dockside property, you go up to about 31. So we benched it a little lower on the high side, we filled it a little on the, on the west side of the east parcel. On the west parcel, the grade is, I think, averaging right around 26 all the way around it, so it's only about a foot of fill, but then we did introduce a, a pretty robust retaining wall on the west lot line, replacing that old retaining wall that was the back of the, of the motel. So it will be up a little bit on the west, but there are some trees over there, I think it'll screen it somewhat, and then, you know, just in, in general, looking at the area, that Lewis Bay Court was about 62 foot up to their ridge, we're about 60 to our ridge from, from the grade. Town Hall, where we're in here, is 72 feet above the crosswalk, the ridge is about 50, it's got a significant roof on it, too, and again, the hospital is quite a bit bigger to the east, 85 feet, six stories, is Mugar, and the new addition's just a little bit shorter than that. Hyannis Harborview, I don't have an exact on that, but that's four stories in the west end, but that's how we're handling it, the grade does change a little bit, but we're leveling it off, as is pretty typical, and then the floors are up about three and a half to four feet above grade, and cutting a little on the high side, filling a good bit on the low side.
So I guess, an approximation, it sounds like, yeah, I think you said the average, again, was 27, and there was a 23 or 24 grade, so up to a few feet or so of grade kind of change, sorry, I know engineers don't like to paraphrase and generalize, but.
Well, the, the average grade plane on the west looks like I'm around 26 all the way around the building, and the front, in the back, I did jump it up to about 30, just to, you know, have it look nice. On the east side, you know, 27 in the front, like I said, at the high point, does drop up just a bit where the, where the entrances go down underneath, the east side is up around 32, but that's offset by the front, which drops down a little bit, so it's up and down, but that's the average grades. They're all shown on, if you want to analyze it in some detail, on sheet five of six, the grading site plan has, you know, spot grades that we could go into as much detail as you need on.
I think that answer, that was, that was a good kind of summary of the general grade changes, thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you, Tim. Any, any other board members at this time, questions, yeah, go ahead, Matt?
Just, just to, on the building height issue, so Dan, I just want you to state again, so you're measuring, you're measuring the building height from the average height of the roof system, right, the average, the average of the gable?
Of the highest roof, you go to the midpoint of that, is, so it's shown, it's shown on the architecturals, was it A203, maybe shows it?
A203 and the subsequent sheet as well.
And, and just state those numbers again, those elevations at the midpoint of the grade plane, I mean, at the midpoint of the, of the gable?
Make sure that mic is on, too.
Yeah. Is this on?
Yeah.
Say who you are.
Yeah, so, this is Mike Nie with Genap Architects, and so we're starting with the average grade plane around 27.7, and we go up to, I don't know if I have that number here, but we go up 60 feet, one inch from there, to the average of the highest roof, so we were very conservative with that, and we chose to use the average of one of the gable, I'm sorry, one of the, the dormer roofs, rather than the main roof, so, again, approaching it very conservatively, and that puts us up a little bit higher than we would otherwise if we went to the main roof. So that would be 27 feet plus the, the 60 feet for the height, essentially.
Mike, we should have your plans, I think, we should be able to pull them up, I think might be helpful for the board.
Thank you, yeah, I was going to ask.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just, maybe this will help you guys answer the question, so the, so the answer is, what, what are the expected building heights, based on your methodology, right, average of the gable? What are the numbers, and can, can we get a certification of those ones built?
Yeah, 100%, yeah, we, we went through it, so we agree within one hundredth of a foot of each other on exactly what those elevations are, so assuming Mr. Bornstein doesn't put an extra sill plate in, we'll, we'll get it right to the inch, but.
But I mean, I think it's important.
Yeah, it, it's, it's critical, and it absolutely can be certified, but right on the plan there, the double asterisk, is 58.58 on the west building and 60.08 on the east building, and to Mike's point, he's measuring to those old dog houses, which are about two-thirds of the way up on the main roof, so we're, we're giving you a few feet on that. If we took away those little dog houses, the, the number would drop a couple of feet.
Again, yeah, and I appreciate that, what we're trying to do is, you know, five, 10 years from now, people go back and look at this record, and they go, well, where'd they average, where'd they measure the grade to, what relief did we grant, right, so it'd be very important to, to establish those, and let me just clarify this, the west building is 60.08?
Yes.
And the, and the east building is 58.58?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And what I can submit to is the, the grade, the finished grade plane, and we'll make sure the grading is just right according to that, because that's the other piece of the puzzle.
Great.
And it's also, that finished grading is critical, too, for the floor being not more than four feet above that same period plane.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Matt, for solidifying that point, definitely important. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, I just wanted to follow up, so we have the very important issue of the building height, I think equally important is, what's, what's the altitude? So it's, it's sitting on a promontory, it's pretty high, do you, do we have, we did the crane test, and we did visuals, but. Do you, do we have, we did the crane test, and we did visuals, but I'm not sure if we actually, X feet above sea level, that would be.
I'm gonna try to answer the question and ask Dan a question at the same time. They typically use a datum that is the sea level. So sea level is usually zero. Is, when we're speaking here, are we speaking about sixty as the, you know, is sixty feet above sea level? Is that where your datum, or that is your site control benchmark?
So you're absolutely right. NAVD eighty-eight is the, the latest geoid that we use. It's basically mean sea level, within a few inches, so close enough for what we're talking about. And then the grade plane is around twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet, and then you go sixty feet above that. So, for instance, it might be eighty-nine, you know, feet above mean sea level to the ridge. I know Lewis Bay Court was ninety-three point three feet above mean sea level, so we could calculate what ours were, too, and so forth. That is very easy to do, and you just add the figures together.
We should be at, Mike Ne with Gnap Architects again, we should be at about eighty-seven feet, nine inches roughly. So eighty-seven, eight and a quarter.
On what datum? Are you, so...
Same one.
Same datum.
Okay, let's back up, guys. I want to know what the average height of each building is, based on the NAVD eighty-eight datum. What, where is that line? What is, what is the number on that line?
It was just as I stated, it was eighty-seven, so on the, which parcel is this one? At one-ten School Street, it would be eighty-seven feet, eight and a quarter inches.
Above mean sea level, not that high.
Yeah.
You know, that's above the ocean.
Again, that, you're asking for...
Above sea level.
Asking for a surveyed plan of the completed buildings with a number that we're going to talk about tonight.
Yep.
That's going to show up on that plan when it's done.
Correct.
And that's based on NAVD eighty-eight?
Correct.
Okay, so it's eighty-seven.
Any surveyor could do it.
So it's eighty-seven above sea level, not sixty?
Correct, yes.
For the west building?
Sixty feet above the grade plane, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd add the thirty feet for the...
So just for the public to be clear, so these buildings are about sixty feet above the grade plane, and in elevation, right, based on, on surveyed elevation?
Sixty-two, three, yeah.
They're gonna be about eighty, elevation eighty-seven to the, to the midpoint approximately?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's two different ways of stating it, but that's a very accurate one, and any surveyor can go and shoot a GPS elevation and measure it up, and then it's a very reproducible number, and it's easy to control. It's a, it's a fine way of doing it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that distinction. Ray, anything else?
So I just, we, so we're, we're clear for the non-engineers in the room. So we're talking about the better part of ninety feet, right on top of the, that high, high point there, as you come into the harbor. So just for the record.
No, we're talking about sixty, we're talking about sixty feet above the average grade plane, and in total elevation, it'll be at elevation eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Approximately. Right, so what you're gonna see above ground is about sixty feet.
Right. And in terms of the actual, if you were in a boat on the water and you looked...
Would be eighty-seven feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Lewis Bay Court, those condos, about ninety-three, three is what I shot on that one, just for reference, so.
Great, thank you.
But it's a little bit further back in all fairness.
Goes up the hill a little, yep. Okay, anything else at this juncture related to this topic, before we go on? Okay. Attorney Kenny, anything else?
Next is the affordable housing units. Mike, can you pull up the affordable housing plan?
Is it this one here, John? Apartment amenities?
Those are the amenities, but if you can go to the actual plans.
I'm not, I have a trouble seeing that, I'm not sure if this is the right one.
No, they may be in the updated, if you go back, right up in the updated dock sites. Oh, no, that's not it either.
Do you have that, Jim, available?
Karen, any idea? The three, three-ten Bonsfall Road plans, the floor plans. Well, while Jim is looking for them, I'll just kind of summarize what is, what we're proposing. We're proposing six affordable units for this project at three-ten Bonsfall Road. In addition, there will be three more affordable units for the, for the three-ten Bonsfall Road project. In other words, there's twenty-nine units at three-ten Bonsfall Road. Under the ten percent inclusionary, that project requires its own three affordable units. This project has twenty-nine, the dockside condominium has twenty-nine proposed units. We're required to have three affordable units. We're offering six. So that's where the nine comes, six for the dockside and three for the three-ten Bonsfall Road. And Jim found the plans for us there. On the first floor, we're proposing a one-three-bedroom, two-bath unit. There are the elevations of the plan, north, south, east, and west. On the second floor, we're proposing two three-bedroom units with two baths each in one bedroom, a one-bedroom unit with one bath. And you can see the two there, and then the one-bedroom unit is, I believe that's it in front of it, I can't, yes. And then on the third floor, we're, we're proposing, again, two three-bedroom units, each with two baths. So as I said, a total of six, we're required to, required to offer three. Mr. Bornstein's upped it to six, and you see the plans there. For amenities, they'd be gas heat, hydro air, microwave, refrigerator, washer and dryer, cable hookup, range hoods, a deluxe shower, plank flooring throughout, closed-circuit TV for security, and two car parking for every unit. So each of those amenities would be in every unit in this facility. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and as a, maybe I'll just throw it in here now, as a, as a little proposed possible amendment to the regulatory agreement. We did add in there and supplied a redlined and clean copy of the regulatory agreement, an option for the town council to accept, in lieu of the six units, a cash contribution of one point two million dollars. We just threw that in there. Some towns have been, have been taking that, feeling they can do more with the one point two, with the cash than, than with the units. So it's an offer that Mr. Bornstein's making. It is an either-or, whatever the town prefers. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll lead it off. The three-bedroom units are all between a thousand and twelve-hundred square feet. Is that right?
That's approximately correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it looked like thousand and nine square feet, twelve-hundred-eighty-nine square feet, so, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking, I need new glasses.
Yeah, it's tough to read, but certainly, to me, you know, that's a good amount of square footage for an affordable unit. Just wanted to share my personal opinion, and would like to get the board's opinion, but I personally would not be in favor of the one-point-two alternative, simply because this is six units that could be online, ready, move-in ready, from what I hear, within a year. And to me, that's, that's, that's the most important factor. Money is money, you can't live in money, and it does sound like a lot of money, but we know how much it costs to build, and I don't know how long it would take, and I don't know how far that money would go. The future is uncertain, and to me, I'd rather take the six that are ready. Any other board members want to make any comments on that? Matt?
I would, I would agree with you. I think it's much more effective to put as many units as we can into the affordable inventory now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bob?
I agree.
Okay.
I, I also agree with that.
Tim?
I agree with that, and I think, if I'm remembering correctly from the last meeting, I don't even think it's a year, was it May anticipated occupancy? Is that about right?
Hi, Stu, just step to the mic.
You're talking about for the affordable?
The affordable's come online, yeah.
Stu Bornstein, developer. We expect to be pretty well-finished with all these units sometime by the end of February. Our holdup is getting the switchgear, which is everywhere you go, is, no matter where you go, is delayed till, till May. But appliances are all ordered to come in in February, so we'll, it'll all be ready, and it'll be turned over as soon as we get our occupancy to the town, which is going to be a good year to two years before the dockside gets built or finished. So the town will have the use of that immediately and turned over to, to be, and we've already started the lottery system with the person in charge of that on some of them, and she's ready to add on the additional units. So all this could be occupied as soon as we, we get the electrical work. And it could come in sooner, but that's what we're told. But you'd have them a year or two before, right away. That's for all, all nine units, not just the six. And I, and I might add, these affordables, I've got windows on all sides, they're, we had originally three units in each of those where they are, but making three, we lost a unit in each floor. We actually lost three units. We, we had to make one smaller to fit in, but these are the best units. They're not pushed aside or anything. They're the best of the best. If you look at the building, they got windows all around, and twelve, thirteen hundred feet gives a chance for a family to really live, not crowded in. And that was important, to do that, in my mind, for people that are gonna be there with a couple of kids.
Great, appreciate that. Okay, and just one final question. Square footage of the one-bedroom, do you happen to know, off the top of your head? The, the one-bedroom that was added recently?
Was it five-seventy-five?
I believe you're gonna be in the area of seven hundred feet, seven fifty. We didn't designate it, we just didn't have time with the architect to lay it out, but it will be a standard, what's being built now on, in Hyannis is around seven to eight hundred feet. It'll be someplace in that size.
Okay, so I think it's safe to say, between all six, we'd be over six thousand square feet. I think that's safe to say.
Oh, yes, I'd say absolutely.
Okay, appreciate that. Just wanted to get a kind of full picture of that.
And I just want to...
About six thousand total? Yeah, probably over six thousand total?
I just want to reiterate that it was a meeting with somebody from the housing committee that pushed for these three-bedroom units, and that's why Mr. Bornstein's offering five three-bedroom units, and then he added this one, one-bedroom on top.
Great, appreciate that. Any other board questions, comments related to the affordable aspect? Ray?
I just wanted to add my voice, that I'd rather take the units and not the money.
Appreciate that, yeah. Okay, anything else? All right, Attorney Kenny?
I believe that concludes all the follow-up that you asked for, so I'll be happy to step aside and let you take public comment, and then I'll wrap up. Thank you.
Excellent. Ray's got a question. Ray, go ahead.
Jim, just on, on the, the issue of the historic commission, did we get a, a reading from the town attorney on, on that?
Not a formal response back at this time, but the informal response to date has been that there is precedent set and that it is a local ordinance that could be considered, but nothing definitive at this time.
So it sounds like we are not, not obliged to refer it back if we, unless we decide to, if we want to.
That's how I see it. I see it as it being up to the board.
All right.
Okay, any further board questions, comments before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go to public comment. Now, I just want to note that nothing in this application has changed. We did take a lot of public comment at our last meeting, so we'd love to hear new public comment. Any public comment that was made at our prior meeting exactly one week ago is a part of the record and does not need to be restated. If there's any new public comment, if those could come forward to the podium, state your name for the record, sign in, and three minutes to make your public comment.
Um...
All right, thank you. Did you have any comment to make, or?
Yes, I do.
Oh, come on up, come on up. Yep, the, the floor is yours. Just remember, just remember to state your name for the record, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Roberta Mock, eighty Greenwood Ave, Hyannis.
Three minutes.
The best view of Hyannis Harbor, our beloved Hyannis Harbor, is right where Stu has this beautiful property. It's the best view, you can watch the fogawi. Those pictures, the first one, oh, I should have my pictures to show, but I, I don't know if you've ever been to the Shaline Lou in Rockport. They're very strict with the historical district in that town. It's a walking town, it's wonderful to go to. It was a business, the Shaline Lou was a collaborative effort with a businessman, Paul Silva, a developer, and the town came together, and if you look at the second picture, you'll see the back of, backdrop is all a window that shows the view of, of the harbor. It gave a small venue for, and then this, they, you can watch the sun go down and then the curtains close for whatever is going on. It's a wonderful presentation. And my thought is that, I thought if part of this development, if we could think of looking at that as incorporating it because it's the best view of the harbor, that it'd just be such a wonderful addition for tourism, for our town. I was thinking it could be called the Barnstable-Bornstein Auditorium and Performance Center. I know Ernie Bach tried to do that, the Bach Center. He ended up, I think, saving the Wang Center in Boston, and I just thought, I just thought I'd bring it as a suggestion. I don't think I really have anything else to say. Thank you.
Very much appreciated, thank you. We appreciate the materials and your comments very much, and we'd welcome the next member of the public who would like to speak. Make your way to the podium. Thank you so much. Welcome, sir. State your name for the record.
My name is Murray Scudder. I'm president and managing partner of Highline Cruises. I think most are familiar with Highline Cruises. We operate ferry service to the islands of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard out of Hyannis Harbor. Been doing that for fifty or sixty years. My family has had business on the waterfront for three generations, well over a hundred We've seen most every project that's come around. Since there were no projects and buildings on the waterfront till now, I don't think there's any of them that have been brought forth, ours included, that I've ever been a hundred percent improve, in favor of, or a hundred percent against. And when Mr. Bornstein approached me or I saw this project, the immediate reaction was, wow, that's, that's pretty impressive. I appreciate, I wrote a letter back in March in favor of the project. I remain in favor of the project. I've been listening to all the comments, I appreciate all the comments. There are many good comments, comments both in favor and opposed to it. I feel, still feel that it would be an unbelievable improvement, an investment in the harbor. You know, given the nature of some of the past projects that have gone and ongoing projects now, although this would certainly be quite visible, I think it would be a, a, a nice to take your eye off some of the other stuff that is going on and see this project as you came into that Hyannis Harbor. I just think it'd be a very impressive and positive project for the waterfront, and I hope that both the town and Mr. Bornstein can work together to find consensus, to allow this quite generous investment in the area, and for the town and Mr. Bornstein. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very much appreciate those comments. Any other members of the public, please come forward. Any new comments? Welcome. State your name for the record.
I'm Deborah Dagwell. Good evening, planning board. And I'm, I'm back again. I oppose this project. And I oppose the project because I look at the history. I was one of the first persons in 2013, this is 10 years ago. This project has come up four times. But in 2013, as council president and my vice president, we were invited to look at this project. And we gave some suggestions then. But I think what disturbs me still is that a lot of times we get these projects, and when people bring them up the first time, they give you promises of what they're going to do. And then when you get to the final project, those things have changed. And we talked about, and I was excited about this project. The vice president was Jessica Raprasetti at the time. We had some concerns about the height, that was always been an issue. But I also was excited because they talked about putting in affordable housing and that people from this town who lived here a long time would have an opportunity, perhaps go through a lottery and get put into one of these, these locations. I see a lot of seniors around, and some of you may have family around, that may have been one of the ones who would have gotten an opportunity to live in something. And this is what made me excited. We're going to have people that grew up here in the town. They may have an opportunity to get a place on the harbor. That's not happening. You know, now we're talking about putting it someplace else. A lot of us have paid taxes here for a long time in this town. I would love to see some of our seniors get, get out of their houses that they're in right now. They're trying to sell, they're trying to, you know, bring in, we're trying to get young families to come in and buy. This is, that was going to be a great way for them to sell their homes and have some young family buy a, a, a house here. And they would be able to maybe be part of that lottery and got a place out on the harbor. They deserve that. They lived here, they paid here. And, you know, we really need to be concerned about people who have given so much to the town, along with our applicant. I've been, I've supported this applicant on, on many, many times. So I wanted to say that because I think that's important, to know how long this project has been here and the promise that was made at the beginning. And that I'm not seeing that today. It's, it's not going to be what I felt was going to be part of this. I also want to say, you know, you are a planning board, and I know this is a tough decision. A lot of these decisions are so tough here. But I wouldn't want anybody to come here and try to circumvent the planning board. You have a job to do, so does the historic, so does site plan. These organizations, just like yours, has a job to do. And I would be here fighting for you just as I am for the other boards that are here. Because you are charged, with a charge to, to deal with certain kinds of ordinances and so on and so forth. And no matter which way you vote today, for or against, I'm not going to be mad with you as an individual. But I am going to be upset that we're not being courteous, we're not being, pushing forth the agendas, pushing forth the ordinances that we as a town have decided on already. If we wanted to go four, four feet up, they would have done that. And they've had plenty of time. This is, you're the third, I've been on the council 12 years or so, you're probably the third planning board. And so every time we get a new planning board, you know, this comes back and somebody else is trying to get this project through with just a little change. If we could just adhere to what the ordinances are and the standards are, I'd be for this project. As I said before, it's a beautiful project, but it's not conforming to what the regulations that we already have in place. And that's important. As I said, you're a planning board and, you know, I'd be here supporting you to make sure that you got heard. But we do have some new things that are coming about. We're talking about an underground garage. I thought that was a super idea, but that's the only one that we know of. How do we know? Yeah, I'm a little nervous about that. It's near the water, even though I heard about the storm, water runoff. We do need underground parking, but this is something new. Not something we can look at and say, oh, somebody's done this someplace else here in, in town. And we could have something to measure. We don't. And I am concerned because it is, what a fun, although I do enjoy the idea that, you know, he came up with a very creative idea of doing some underground parking. And lastly, I want to say is, has to do with, we have a new before. Okay, the other thing I wanted to say is, when I was talking about the promises, I bought a piece of property where we had the same promises. And, and, and they came, and if you see the property now, it's nothing like it was. There's no restaurants and, and all the beauty and all the stuff that was supposed to be there. It's not there. And I'm concerned about us rushing to do this right now. Particularly the fact that we have a Hyannis Harbor Inner Harbor Master Plan that's coming up, that's going to be voted in, all the proposals are due on October the 25th, that's two days from now. Why are we rushing? That's going to be a new harbor plan. We need to look, let them, give them an opportunity, let people give their proposal before we okay this major project that's going to go in our harbor. And I say our harbor because I've lived here over 40-some years and I have, my husband's family's been here over 100 years. So it is our harbor. And I think we should take the time and let this Inner Harbor Master Plan be looked at and be established before we jump and make a decision and put a building up before he even gets an, approve this, before he even gets a chance for the Inner Harbor plan to, to, to come to fruition. We also had a harbor master plan that's supposed to come with this. Why wouldn't we want to listen to the master, to the harbor master and get some feedback from them? I mean, I just don't want to see this rush. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying we have some ordinances that are coming up downtown. Give it time. This, this is the things that the people wanted. And I think we, you know, we need to listen to the people. I'm here not as a town councillor right now, I'm expired from that. I'm here as a citizen, speaking for other citizens and speaking for my community. And, and many of us that, that have lived here in this town and paid taxes and cherished that harbor. We're lucky to have one and we want to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those comments. Could have the next member of the public come down? Podium, state your name for the record. Remember to sign in.
I'm with you tight. So my name is Fabio de Oliveira. I own Torino Restaurant with my father-in-law and we own a lot of property in town. And I also own a kitchen countertop business as well. And my family's been in this town for almost over 40 years. And for the past 15 years, I get to meet a lot of people in this town, constructions and all there. And one of the persons became a friend of mine as well. His name was Chad Doe. And I did a lot of work with Chad, I bought an apartment for him as well. And when Mr. Doe come into this town, he used to own all the 99 restaurants. And his goal was to make Hyannis better. And he did a beautiful work at 540 Main Street. That was one of his first project. When the first time Mr. Doe come in, he had the same ladies come in in this place and always against his project. Second project Mr. Doe did was 68th and the Street. He had a hard time as well in this town, building properties and trying to make Hyannis looks nice. The third project was Louis Bay, the condos by the Cape Cod Hospital. That was the last project Mr. Doe was done in this town. I remember one time we had a lunch and he told me that was the last place he'll build anything in this town because he's really tired. Every time he wants to do something, there's always against, people against him, his project. And he ended up moving to Florida where he's building houses and apartments right now. He's up in Boca and he's very happy. So I liked the project, I think it's beautiful. We do a lot of work in Nantucket. I got eight, nine guys going to Nantucket every single day in the summertime. They're having the same problem with places to live, you know, there's not enough houses for sale or apartments. I think the project is beautiful. I really think the apartment is really nice. I mean, who wouldn't want to buy a unit in the water? Where you can walk to the dock, you go to the marina, you go to tugboats, you go to, you know, all the places around. It's, it's a beautiful project. And I, I think, I think this town was Mr. Bornstein for, you know, this man is over 80 years old. For all the money he's been putting in this town, he's one of the largest taxes-paying in this town. He employ over hundreds of people. So I hope this town will work with this man and try to get this project approved, you know? We need to make Hyannis better. We've been in trouble for the past few years. It's not been good to Hyannis. We got someone that come in and invest millions and millions in dollars. That creates jobs, that creates a lot of people to work. We need to change. We need to make Hyannis a better town to live, you know? Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Next member of the public, come on down. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Welcome. Just state your name for the record, sign in.
Good evening. My name is Laura Cronin. I live here in South Street in Hyannis. Thank you for speaking, letting me speak tonight. I writing to you, concerned for this item on the agenda, and I oppose the project as is being presented with the, even with the plans and the updated plans. I spoke before about the, but I have been consistent with my concerns of the project about density, height, and the number of stories for the Hyannis Harbor District. Nothing has changed. The proposed project is still outside the current updated zoning and still seeks significant waivers. The recent Town of Barnstable Reform Based zoning update did not change the Hyannis Harbor District zoning regarding density, height, or number of stories, which still remains at 35 feet and two and a half stories respectively. The proposed development is significantly exceeds the town's density and zoning, which remains at seven per acre. And this proposal is an overall of 28 per acre, which is 75% more than the current zoning for the Hyannis Harbor District. It's still over four and a half stories. That's 44% more than the two and a half stories allowed. And the height of the two buildings together, as mentioned, 60.08 and 58.58 is about 41% of the current at 35 feet allowed. On January 23rd this year, the board saw fit to follow the current zoning ordinances. And when it rejected this proposal as it is too large for this location and zoning, nothing has changed with respect to density, height, and number of stories. I am respectfully asking you to reject this proposal as it is still outside this district. For the record, I just want to say from previous meetings that I was not part of the Historic Commission when this project came before them before. I did speak at public comment at that meeting, which will be known in the minutes. And I did comment how great and wonderful this project development and layout was, but asked if it could be done within the current zoning. And I was told that, we were told that it was not. This project is, on the regulatory agreement, is valued at over $60 million. That's $2.1 million per unit. That's a lot of money for a few people to live in those units. By right, Mr. Bornstein could build something nice for Hyannis Harbor. Maybe not $60 million, but he could build a legacy within the current zoning. If this were to go through, all of the properties along South Street, the Harbor District itself would be doing the same thing, requesting the same thing and adding additional stories where you would have anywhere from 60 to 80 to 90 feet from the Harbor View for the Marview. But that's not what the town zoning plans have done. I would agree that we should keep this on hold, find out what the new proposals are going to be for this district. But for right now, a lot of work went into the zoning, inform based zoning to measure this particular project and understanding that you were trying to get away from regulatory agreements, which has been working pretty well. Some people spoke last week that Mr. Bornstein deserves to build this because he's 80 years old and he's put a lot of work into this. Well, I tell you, I'm 70 years old and I put a lot of work into Hyannis. I, I, I volunteer for committees, I work with the Civic Association. We do a lot of, to try to protect the values that we have here and the, and the character of the harbor and the town. And the form-based zoning is our step for doing that. And we are trying very hard to keep that going forward. And to allow something like this to go in, you've now just changed the by right for this particular area. And I think that that would be a shame. Recently, the TD Bank project went before the Historic Commission. And that is by right what they have there. There's no waivers on that, and that went through. No waivers, and that's why that went through. I respectfully ask that this board reject this proposal as it's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate comments. Again, we're looking for new comments. Nothing has changed. We're not looking for everybody to repeat their comments from a week ago. And we're looking for a three-minute limit, which I have held nobody to. So please, please.
Did you do all that just before I got here on purpose? Just kidding, I'm kidding.
No, no. We love you.
Of course you do. A little levity never hurt anybody, right? Just in common to a few things that Mr. Kenny said was, the Harbor View Motel, the new addition there, is four stories high, that's true. But it's also on the lowest point of Ocean Street and it's across the street from the harbor, not, not high on a hill overlooking a parking lot on the harbor. The Rusher Trust, which got a bypass to go to Historic, is the Hostel. Okay, that's what it is, Hyannis Hostel, if you didn't know that. It's already located in two houses that were built in the 1800s. So it probably didn't have a need to go to the Hyannis Historic District. And the height of 89 Louis Bay Road, it's apples and oranges. When viewed from the water, that building is across the street also from the harbor. So it's much less visible than this building will be because it's much closer to the harbor and obviously something closer looks higher. So I just wanted to talk about that. I assume you got my little love letter from Friday? I would just say, Mr. Kenny indicated regulatory agreements are all about compromise. The applicant compromises, the town waives zoning, supposedly receives considerable benefits in return. If this building was three and a half stories, it would still require waivers from the town, which the town may consider as a compromise with the applicant for reducing it by one floor. If this building was three and a half stories and went before the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront District Commission, Historic District Commission, I would support it and drop my opposition to this project. I hope you'll consider asking the applicant to redesign it, to redo the pro forma for three and a half stories. So it's brought into scale with the general area. It would still be 13 to 14 feet taller than what's allowed. It would still need a waiver. But people would still see it high on the hill from afar. So everybody wins. He gets, somebody coming into the harbor would still obviously see it because it's taller than anything else around it, but it's relatively in scale to the rest of the area. And I think that's very important when we're talking about the Hyannis Inner Harbor. So I hope you'll consider referring the applicant to Historic Review Committee. You don't have to, but it's the right thing to do because this is not the same project that it was before. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Well done, right on. Well done, thank you. Welcome. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Mark McCarty. I'm a resident of the Town of Barnstable. I've been a resident for the better part of 56 years. And I appreciate everyone's opinion in this. And I understand change is not always good on some size and sometimes it is good. So I have a particular memory of the dockside back in its heyday and it was a lot of fun. But that was a long time ago and it's been pretty much an eyesore for the last 35 years or so. It's a beautiful piece of land, beautiful view. But I think there are some opportunities here that are being presented to improve the vision of, and the view of the Village of Hyannis, especially downtown, but also down on the waterfront. Little statistics too, and I hear about the affordable housing being allotted here. In October 2020, the median sale price in Hyannis was $3. In October twenty twenty, the median sale price in Hyannis was three hundred and forty thousand dollars. In September of twenty twenty-three, it was six hundred. It's now six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Homes for sale in Hyannis in April of twenty twenty were forty. Now there's seventeen houses for sale. Not sure the price for forty B units as a whole, but in March of twenty twenty, there were thirty homeless priced in in the range of three hundred and forty to four hundred and fifty. Now there were three. So obviously affordable housing is a desperate need in the Village of Hyannis. And I think this project adds to that availability and makes it more compatible for what the needs are in the town. But I am here to voice my opinion in favor of the project and I hope you feel really done. Thank you.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. Next up, Attorney Lawler, welcome. Come on down.
I don't get an I love you?
It's reserved for Felicia. I'm sorry. Welcome.
David Lawler, on behalf of Dockside Marina. I'm going to address my statements to some of the comments that were made by the applicant last week and you know, it's interesting. In the presentation last week, it seems like the applicant was doing everything it could to say that it's not really the Harbor District, you know? This is more akin to the neighborhood next door. You know, this is much more akin to the greenery, this or that. It's also interesting that the project is actually called the Dockside. And the owner had owned the entire lot previously and subdivided it so many years ago. And it also came up that this was subject to conservation. Well, if it's subject to conservation, that means at some point in the lot is within a hundred feet of the water line. This is in the heart of the Harbor District, on the highest point as indicated, thirty-two feet high. Now, there's a Harbor District for a reason. And I'm not going to dismiss affordable housing. God knows people need places to live in an affordable manner. But there are approximately twenty-seven thousand housing units in the town of Barnstable. There are six, what I would refer to as working marinas that have mechanics on site, gasoline and whatnot. Two of them are on the other side in Barnstable Harbor. Two of them are primarily for, they are in Osterville. And one in the hub of Barnstable, in the hub of Cape Cod, in the in the most important harbor on Cape Cod, there is one working marina that sells gas, can lift a boat out with a lift. And why do people come to Cape Cod? One reason, the ocean. Whether it's the beaches or the boats or the cool breezes in the summer, they come for the ocean. And there's a reason we have a Harbor District and there's a reason the Harbor District has certain restraints on it. It's to protect the harbor. Not twenty-seven thousand other units around. This is the place for the harbor. And my client provides these tremendous services for the harbor, has a couple hundred employees. It's one of, you know, it's crazy. You go to Cape Cod. There's not a lot of places you can have dinner and actually look at the water. He has that. And with respect to, you know, the ability to bring a boat in and have it fixed, whether commercial or dredging the harbor, doing all this. And as indicated, and Mr. Tag was talking about medians, you know, eighty-seven feet above sea level, that's the median. If you actually do the actual math, it's thirty-two feet is the highest point on the elevation and then it was like eighty-eight, whatever. It comes out to over ninety-two feet. And that's on the that's on the gable, that's halfway up the gable. So if you actually run that higher from the actual, if you were to run the very peak all the way to the water level, you're probably coming close to a hundred feet. It's a it's a colossus. It's like the Colossus of Rhodes hanging over Barnstable Harbor. And that's really what we're talking about here. And then people are talking about, and rightfully so, you know, we're worried about the economy, interest rates are high. This project is going to be here long after everyone in this room is gone. Okay? We're talking about a hundred year project on the highest point. I don't, I suggest to the board not to make decisions on what's going on today. It's what's going on in the future, you know? I don't, you know, I've been, you know, on the Cape, I'm older than Mark, so a couple of years more than Mark. But and lived year round here for about thirty years and seen about four different cycles of ups and downs and ups and downs. That's going to continue when it's going to be, if it's low now, it's going to be high later. And when it's high later, it's going to be low again. And I don't think you need to take those things into consideration. What you need to take into consideration is the harbor and the Harbor District. And the fact that this Harbor District needs to be protected and not with a hundred, you know, a hundred feet from sea level. But with something that fits, that's reasonable in the property. And that's the issue. What's going to be here when we're gone? And that's what this this board is tasked with. And that's a huge responsibility because nobody has a crystal ball. But, you know, some people thought back in the sixties that Boston City Hall was a great idea. You know, you don't know. But that's the reality of it. And, you know, it is in the harbor. It's not anywhere else. And that is the reason why there's two and a half stories, to protect the uses that my client provides, to protect the boats, the people to come here, to pay all the bills and to create housing and everything else. I'll let Wayne deal with the other matters. Thank you. And I really thank everybody. I mean, this is probably what the tenth time I've been before you on these two applications. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that. Our next member of the public, Wayne, welcome. Come on up. State your name for the record.
Wayne Kirker from the Dockside and Hyannis Marina. Hyannis Marina was mentioned last week because they said that there was, you know, like there was a forty-four foot high building, but by those same ways of measuring a building, it comes out to about thirty-two feet. And I didn't go for any variances or anything. I just built what was allowed. But believe it or not, but I would support this project too if there were three stories, pretty much the same as Felicia just said. But I'd also want it to be able to contain its services. And and I applaud the underground part. And I know about that a little bit because I built an underground building in Yarmouth, right? When you come into Hyannis Marina, there's one under there. You'd never know it. But I did that so I could contain the services on the property, not so that the neighbors had us be trying to get into their driveway while we were parked in their way and all that sort of thing. So that's what this needs. This needs to contain its own parking. And in relative to that overall height, once again, all of the all of the comparatives that were made, comparisons that were made, were made about buildings on the other side of the street someplace that were partially blocked by other buildings. So they they tear up. And this one tears up from South Street. That's great. But from the harbor, it just jumps up. So that's why I object to this design. I hope he comes back with something that's that fits. You know, over on Craigville Beach Road where I live, I just thought of this, the the trade winds, the trade winds built all these condos. And you leave your street and they're beautiful. There's there's some parking on down a gray level, there's extra parking in back. The landscapers and the rubbish trucks and the just everybody, they just fit on the property. You're not trying to make your way out to Craigville Beach Road because you don't have to try. It's, you know, they they contain it all. And it's perfect. This needs to contain itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Next member of the public.
I'm new.
You look familiar. Oh, I was going to get there. Welcome.
Can I borrow your pen?
Just state your name for the record.
Hi, Wendy North Cross. I am a resident of Barnstable since nineteen eighty-four, but I've been hanging around longer than that. I sent you something in writing because I was afraid I wouldn't be able to be in the meeting in time, but here I am. So just wanted to stand actually in support of this project. I think that time is money. If if it's true, as Ms. Dagwan has said, that it came before us for ten years now. I mean, this is a long time to be chewing on this particular site and concept. I also, as someone that's worked long and hard on how Hyannis looks and acts and works for our visitors and our tourists, I will tell you that we have we have achieved a lot. We created a walkway to the sea. We purchased parcels to to move buildings to open the view, the vista and the access from the Village Green to the corner of South Street here, overlooking Assleton Park, which we also acquired and created open space so that people had access and view to that beautiful harbor. But we've also been working to elevate Hyannis. We need to elevate what's here. We need to elevate our community so that not only is it an important investment, but people actually, you know, want to be and spend their money here. I think this project would in fact elevate, no pun intended. I think this this project would elevate Hyannis. I think it's it's over time and as someone who also sits on your Housing Trust Committee for the town, I I agree with your taking six units rather than the cash. I think it's really, really difficult to create affordable housing almost anywhere. To have that type of inventory come online within months is pretty significant. So I stand in support of that too. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that.
You can all clap now.
Welcome. Just state your name for the record.
Thank you. Margot Pisacano. I own Margot and Company Real Estate. And I've lived on the Cape since I was five years old, so it's a long time. The first time I was shown this plan and the video, I was really excited. I've seen Cape Cod change from little tiny cottages, little rooming houses, and I was just excited that it's time for a change for Hyannis, Barnstable. And I just, being through some of the Bornsteins' properties, I've had the options to find tenants for some of their units. And especially the newest one that I've seen, the one on Main Street, Cape Cod Times Building. And they've done a beautiful job there. You know, they've they've done their project, they've completed it, they've rented it out. Their rents are not that high. A lot of my rentals charge higher rents than the Bornsteins are charging. And the fact that they can give six units affordable, I thought was very generous. I also thought when I saw the project, wow, you're brave. You're building this multimillion dollar project among rooming houses, motels, a beautiful harbor, yes. But it's just, I was surprised that he would invest that much there. And I think if a lot of other properties along South Street, Pleasant Street, all of those, there's going to be changes anyway. I mean, people will be selling. There's attrition with all types of homes and whether they they'll all have to come before you anyway for permits and I just want to go on record that I love the property and I think it really is time for some changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Do we have any additional members of the public? Marty, welcome.
Welcome. Long time no see, Steve.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marty Brimell, President and CEO of the Greater Hyannis Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Greater Hyannis Chamber of Commerce, we support the Dockside condominium development that is being proposed by Schuesting Properties LLC. The chamber supports well thought out and sustainable modifications to zoning and planning that will help the future growth of Hyannis. We need to foster residential and commercial growth. Under two minutes. That's our statement. Thank you.
Concise. Well done. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any additional members of the public? Welcome, sir.
Longer to write it.
Oh, yeah. Just state your name for the record. Thank you.
Brendan Bricklin from Centerville. I own a couple of businesses in town, Cape Gunworks Airport Road. Also bought a commercial condo of Chad Doe's at five forty Main Street, which is now Echo Salon that my wife runs. I do want to express my support of this Dockside condominiums. As a local businessman and licensed construction supervisor with prior experience in executing much smaller building projects, I have some insight into the challenges involved in bringing such a proposal to fruition. This appears to be a controversial project. However, the potential benefits that this brings our town far outweigh any negatives. Not only will our town benefit from the improvements, but there will be financial gains with minimal impact on our school departments and first responders. Tonight is really not a vote on the dockside. It's really an either or situation. Because, you know, we all know that Mr. Bornstein could do something else if this gets denied. He could put a sixty plus unit forty B in, or who knows what else would go there. So a no vote for this is really a yes vote for something larger and probably less slightly. So in considering the facts and potential impact on our town, I urge you to support this. In short, let's make a decision that'll benefit our community for years to come. And secondly, you know, I've heard some people say that, oh, if you lived in this town, you deserve to live on the harbor. And the business degrees that I obtained, that's not how life works. I wish I could live on the water. When I look out my window, I see the power lines of Centerville. Because that's what I can afford and I'm very happy with it. And I like that. So if you have the money to spend one point eight million on one of Stewie's units, maybe you'll be able to buy a boat from Mr. Kirker and, you know, supply the town with good tax revenue. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very much appreciate your comments. All right. Any additional public comment? Come on down. State your name for the record.
My name is Brian Cobb. I'm from Centerville and I've been in the real estate business now for forty years here on Cape Cod. I've been selling a lot of real estate in the in the Hyannis area and the other speakers were correct, so Hyannis does need a change. And I feel that Mr. Bornstein with this building that he's going to be building here, I'd much rather see that than another Cappy's across from the airport, or storage for boats. So I really support this this development that he's doing and please support him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. All right. Thank you. Welcome. Come on down. State your name.
Marie Souza. Marie Morin Souza. And I am a multi-generational Cape Codder. And my family's been in Hyannis for over a hundred years. So I'm not a hundred years old yet, but I've seen a lot of changes as well. And we're not going to stop change. I sat here last week for three hours in the previous meeting and I listened to everybody's arguments and with all due respect to everybody, I think people had some good points on both sides. So as one of the previous speakers said, you know, we have two options here. We have twenty twenty-nine units or we have sixty units. And the I I think that it's pretty clear that there'd be less services with larger units with the twenty-nine units than there would be with the sixty units. One of the arguments was that we need a more affordable housing, you know, these are luxury units. And Mr. Bornstein is providing those additional units. And I do want to say I have no business, I'm also in real estate. I have no business relationship with Mr. Bornstein. I have, I I really was on the fence. But as a citizen, I felt that, you know, I needed to step up and say what I feel about Hyannis because I love Hyannis. I grew up here. And I just think at this point in time, we need to elevate the image of Hyannis. I can't tell you how many times I've heard people don't want to live in Hyannis because it's got a bad rap. And it's so unfair because it's a great little village, not really a little village, but it's a great village. It's a great place to live. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to walk down Main Street by myself on a sunny day and it's like just brought back old memories. My my grandfather had a business on Main Street when it was a dirt road. So I I really know this area very, very well. I think there were concerns about trash and, you know, where will they turn around? Well, if if you have sixty units, it's going to be more trash. There's going to be more refuse than there will be from twenty-nine units. And and in terms of, you know, as I said, the affordability, he's offering three more units than than that's even required, which I think is very commendable because it's very, very expensive to build today. It's unbelievable. And I know a million dollars sounds like a lot. But there's probably a lot of people sitting in this room that didn't pay near that, but that's about what your property is worth today in today's market. It's just very expensive to build. I understand about the stories and that was, the height was something else that was which was discussed. And that was the major concern for me. What is it going to look like from the harbor? Well, in my visits to the harbor, the heart of the harbor is Ocean Street, Bismarck Park. Well, in my visits to the harbor, the heart of the harbor is Ocean Street, Bismarck Park, the Village Green, the Shianis, that's the, the heart. And up on the hill, what do you see when you come in? You see this town hall. It stands out. It's a standout. And you know what? I think it looks great. It's been here forever, and, and I, I don't, I, I don't see the objection to the height. I really don't. It's not going to be any higher than the other buildings near there. It's on the fringe of the historic. And quite frankly, I scratched my head wondering why it's in the historic district and why it isn't part of the other district. But having said that, I still feel that, you know, consideration should be given to this property. So I think this is going to bring some tax revenue. The currently, I checked on the taxes, the current taxes for that property have been about $20,000 a year to the town. With this new development, I've calculated about $600,000 to the town every year. And I think that's pretty substantial. And this has been a project that's come on and on and on for years and years and years. And whether you agree or you like or don't like somebody, I think the question is what's best for the town, what's best for Hyannis? And I think to elevate Hyannis to a higher level is a positive thing. And I don't think coming into the harbor, you see the Steamship Authority, it's, it's really almost on the Yamath line if you look at the map of the harbor. And I don't feel that it's going to be ugly to look at. I think it's going to be quite nice and impressive. So I, I support this project for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Welcome. State your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Marie Lys. I'm actually here to read something on behalf of Chuck Carey, who is a commercial broker here in Hyannis for Carey Commercial. As a commercial property and business broker, I have the pleasure of having one of the first conversations that interested business buying parties have about the Cape. They, and you won't want to hear this, will frequently rule out Hyannis because of the dilapidated buildings, public day drinking homeless, and reputation for crime. The dockside building won't erase that, this on its own, but it will probably begin to upgrade that might spread out to the area, pulling it out of the atrophy that hangs over it like a cloud. Few developers will initiate a project that make less money than the Plan B, but that's exactly what is happening here. If the town does not allow the 29 units, they'll be deliberately voting for the 60-plus unit lesser quality building already designed that is a right of the zone. This would continue the business-as-usual attitude that has made Hyannis what it is today, a conglomeration of the least expensive solutions. Here is an opportunity to take advantage of the desire and capability to build a high-end building in Hyannis, the home of mediocre buildings. Make this the exception. Thank you, Chuck Carey.
Thank you very much. All right. Any additional comment? Come on down. Jake, welcome.
Thank you. I'll be very quick.
No problem. Just state your name for the record.
President of Hyannis. Sort of not totally related to the project, but I just wanted to highlight how out-of-date our inclusionary ordinance is for housing. We're in this, you know, housing crisis right now. It's a piece of the puzzle. You know, the developer's offered cash, he's offered more units. What is the win for the town? What is the best formula? And unfortunately, you guys are set to decide that tonight, but I would also encourage you to push on the council and you guys together to update our, our inclusionary ordinance. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. I think that's a great point. Any additional public comment? Come on down. Welcome.
Niall Morin.
Just state your name for the record.
Niall Morin. Also a resident of town of Barnstable, one generation further than Marie, so well over 100 years. She's my aunt. I had no intention of coming up, but my hope would be the balance. We do have a lot of developments that come before you for low-income housing and so on, and the properties that I own as rentals as well. A lot of these people can't afford to go to the restaurants and support these things. They, they work for the restaurants. But it seems as though the improvement of this property compared to the one that Chad did right up the street, it's very impressive. So in regards to design, I've never seen it before, but it is very impressive. But I do strongly feel there's a need for balance of people with that type of wealth to come into the town to support the businesses so that these people that are in the affordables can have jobs. So I think that that balance is very important in my opinion. So for that reason, I'd support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any additional comment? Come on down. Well, welcome, sir. Just state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Eric Schwab from West Hyannis. I, I don't understand your math. The area is zoned for 25 feet, right? 35 feet, excuse me, right? And you want to give 60, right? And you're asking 1.2 million for the extra height. And it was, oh, it's six units, isn't that wonderful? If the building is worth $60 million and we want 25% affordable, he should be paying 15 million. Anything less than 15 million for four and a half stories, you're giving away the town. You're giving it away. So I suggest you kick this back, try to talk some reason into the guy, and come up with three buildings downtown for 15 million that regular folks can live in if you want to build this. That's what Hyannis needs. Hyannis needs a place for regular people to live. And, you know, 1.2 million is nothing. So you've got to drive a hard bargain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any other members of the public would like to speak? It's time to do so. All right. Come on down. Just state your name for the record.
Cheryl Pell. So I usually like to wait till last simply so I can hear what other people take in what they have to say. Sorry, I have a long address. Good evening. You've heard a lot of, from a lot of people tonight, a lot of realtors. Anyway, I appreciate that you want new things. There's obviously, I spoke before. A couple corrections. With much, much respect to Attorney Kenny, the, he had stated last time that the chair spoke and two members of the HHDC in addition. It was only one other. I don't know who, he must have misunderstood somebody else that's been a member of the HHDC. And also to clarify, it is the HHDC, we actually, because of the same mistake, so many people were calling it different things. About seven years ago, I asked everybody to take a vote, what are we going to call us? HHDC, and it was unanimous. The other thing, it was stated that I had commented about the only change or something like that being a porch. I had not mentioned anything about a porch. What I said was that there were substantial and significant changes, and therefore it rendered it a new application. So I do, you asked about the legality. I did have something sent to me when I asked for it to be checked. The commission's jurisdiction, the HHDC's jurisdiction under subsection 11229, except as this article may otherwise provide, no building, structure, setting, or part thereof within the district shall be constructed, demolished, moved, or altered in any way that affects the exterior architectural feature subject to public view until the commission, that would be the HHDC, shall first have issued a certificate of appropriateness, a certificate of non-applicability, or a certificate of hardship with respect to such construction, demolition, movement, or alteration. We did have that confirmed. The HHDC, we have a great group. I have, did mention that last time, but I wanted to check our statistics because I pride myself on our commission because we try very, very hard to make things work. Just last week, we had an application that nobody thought would actually pass, and I think there's a couple of people here who were there. Yes, they came back to us three times. Sometimes people come back two or three times, and we try very, very hard. The proof is in the facts. In 2022, we had 38 applications. 35 were approved as submitted. One was appealed, there were zero disapproved, and there were two withdrawn. This year, so far, we have had 42 applications. 39 of those were approved and received a certificate of appropriateness as submitted. Two had come back and they had modifications. We helped them to make it work. Because I honestly believe 99.9%, we can help it to make it work and stay within the ordinances as guidelines. As former town councillor and former town council president, I believe Deb Dagwan pointed out, ordinances and guidelines are there for a reason. On the, uh, one so far this year, we have had one disapproval with an invitation to come back and help to make it work. So why is it such a success? It's because we do try hard to help them make it work, fit into the guidelines, because we've taken our oath and swore to abide by those guidelines and ordinances which are set out by the town, not by us. But don't give us those guidelines and ask us to swear that we'll abide by them and try to make them work if we can just say sometimes we're just going to ignore them. An example would be zoning. For a while there, we came up against zoning quite a bit, and I kept saying, change the zoning, and then we'll be okay. Zoning was changed, and more applications were, were approved. So I've heard from a lot of people here tonight, the, you have a very important task before you. And that is, the first is say that some people are exempt from the rules and the ordinances and the guidelines. And the other is to say, we follow the ordinances and guidelines because that's what we're here to do. And my suggestion is, as I said before, remand it back to the HHDC. Send it back and let us try to help to make it work. But it's a two-way street, as you know. You have a big job here. You know, can we make it work? Yes. Can you work with us? Those who attended the meeting last week knew how much we, how hard we tried to make it work. So as I said, said before, and as Mr. O'Neill, you pointed out when it, with regard to a previous application tonight, you asked if it was in the historical or the waterfront, and it was not. But this, as I had said before, this one is in the historic district. It's on the edge. Mr. Bornstein and his representatives are correct, but it is in the historic district. And I feel that we need to abide by that. See my last page? It is often compared to the hospital. Hospital is not in the historic district, and it's further back. It's not on the waterfront. And as, as section one, subsection 11229 on commission jurisdiction, it doesn't say that there are any exceptions. In fact, it says there should not be any way affects the exterior and no building, structure, or setting, or part thereof. It does not say, and there are exceptions. Of course, there are the things where you can say people can come in for a waiver. And I would also note that the one from last week didn't need any waivers because they worked with us, and we helped it to work. And there's others. So is there a precedence that was brought up? Yes, there has been a precedence, and a number of those were identified. Each time, it gets a little bit more leeway. We want to be careful, I think, on not to give too far of a precedent because it'll keep growing. As former town councillor and town council president Deb Dagwan pointed out, you don't want to be able to circumvent the planning commission or board, and also not to circumvent the HHDC. Is it doable? Yes, I think it's doable, but it needs to be worked on. And a number of those things have been identified. So, and I also believe it's possible to have a legacy there. But it's something that needs a two-way street and working on it. I apologize that I cannot stay too long tonight. I have a friend who's just out of the hospital, and I'm taking supplies, but I will be here for a little bit longer, but I don't want anyone to mistake that as an insult or anything. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I would advise or suggest that you look at subsection 11229. And my final comment is I urge you to send it back to the HHDC and see if we can find a way to make it work that appeals or appeases the vast majority. Thank you and have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate that. If there's any, if there's any additional public comment, this would be the time to come forward to the podium. Okay. Seeing none, we're going to do a five-minute recess, if that's okay with the board? Okay. Five-minute recess. All right, we're going to get going again. If everyone could just take your seats, we'll get settled. We'll get things back, back rolling here. Okay. All right, everyone's settling in. And go to Attorney Kenny for brief comments.
Under two hours.
Oh, God, Attorney Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is, this is not the Gong Show.
Just a few, few comments. Obviously, this comes down to really two requests for relief. Height and number of stories. I guess the people that are opposed to this project are looking at it from standing down in the harbor, and those that are in favor are standing on South Street looking at these beautiful buildings. It's, you know, how you look at it and the impact. But some have talked about adhering to standards. If they adhere to the standards, they would support it. Part of our standards, as I've said before, time and again, is a regulatory agreement process. If you're not going to have waivers, we'll have a regulatory agreement process. In order to build this, as you've heard me say before, we have to have the density. And the density is not four times the allowed, as somebody stated. It's not seven units per acre. It's tied into the number of parking spaces. And as we showed you at the last meeting, we could do up to sixty-plus units on the site with parking. This is twenty-nine units with seventy parking spaces. We are not asking for any density relief. It's simply height and number of stories, and we need that relief so we have enough units to support the infrastructure and the bling that's on this building. We took off one full floor that was a total of five units from the project that did not reduce the infrastructure. We still have to build the garage for the seventy cars. We still have the eight elevators. And then we still have all these beautiful architectural features that are going to be built into this building. So, to say that, well, you know, it would be nice if it was two and a half stories or three stories, I would support it. If we could build it at that, we probably wouldn't be here. But you can't build this project at those levels. And if you don't believe me, take a look at the rest of the projects that are going on around downtown Hyannis. I'm not knocking any of them. Most of them are fairly attractive, but there's nothing special about them. As I said last week, you'll find them in any other community throughout these coasts. None of them set the tone like this project will for the east end of Hyannis. As far as the, the Russia Trust not needing to go to HTC, as my friend Ms. Penn pointed out, she said it probably didn't need to go. That was two historic buildings from the eighteen hundreds with a change of use. If anything should have gone, that should have gone. This was a dilapidated restaurant, an empty lot. And yet, we did go to HTC. We did get a certificate of demolition. We did get a certificate of appropriateness for this project. In fact, it was voted four to one in favor. And then it was appealed, and it was upheld by the appeals committee. We are not circumventing the HTC. We've been through the process. The simple fact of the matter is, we don't feel we should have to go back every time there's a minor change. It's not the way the process should work. Others, others disagree. I don't know how you feel about it, but you certainly have within your authority, the authority to grant a waiver from the HTC. And it's only for changes from the project that was approved on February sixteenth and then upheld on April twenty-sixth. And keep in mind, at that time, the project was five and a half stories. And it was significant discussion at the hearing about the project. We gave you the minutes. Significant discussion about the height and the density. At that time, we did have four times the density. At that time, it was seven units per acre, and we were asking for twenty-eight units per acre. And the HTC approved it. So, we are not circumventing it. So, to come before you and say there's been no changes is simply not accurate. There's been significant changes. We don't need the density relief, and we've reduced it by one full floor. So, it's, it's the same project that was approved by the HTC, it's simply smaller. As far as my, not my brother-in-law, but my brother-in-the-law, we had a little laugh about that myself on the tongue last week outside, my friend Mr. Lawler and I. But to say that this is in the heart of the harbor district, it's on the fringe of the harbor district. It's, we're across the street from the downtown neighborhood district. And to the right is the downtown hospital district and the downtown village district. And to the left of the downtown neighborhood district is, again, the downtown village district. And as you said, this building will be around a long time. So, base your decision on what's going to happen in the future, or what's proposed for this, this area in the future. Directly across the street, in the downtown neighborhood district, they can go to fifty, fifty feet in three stories. As we front along South Street, schools, as we front along South Street, we're approximately fifty feet. The downtown hospital district can go to eighty-five feet in six floors. The downtown village district, immediately to our right and immediately to our left, the greenery building of the Lewis Bay condominiums is in the downtown village district. And just to the left of the downtown neighborhood district is, again, the downtown village district. So, basically, the, the buildings that are on School Street going towards Main Street from South Street are in the neighborhood district and limited to fifty feet. The lots next door to those, to those properties can go to sixty-six feet. So, this neighborhood is going to change. We may be the first one there, but it's, we're actually not the first one there. You've got the greenery at sixty-one feet. You've got a second hospital tower going up at over eighty feet. You've got the town hall building, which is taller than our, taller than our buildings. So, it's not out of character for, for place for this neighborhood. It's well within it. And as far as impact on the harbor, what, this isn't waterfront property. We have no impact on the harbor. Zero. We're not going to impact Mr. Kirk's marina operation. He's, he's got the lot below us, he's got a parking lot, and he's got boat slips near the, near the town landing. The only impact this is going to have on him is, somebody said, is maybe somebody that buys a condo will buy an expensive boat for Mr. Kirk and uses marina services. But as far as impact on the harbor, it's only going to be visual, and it's spectacular. These are beautiful buildings, but you can't build them at two and a half stories. It just, the economy doesn't work, not with underground parking. If you, if you want to have parking lots, more parking lots in the harbor, I mean, take a look of an aerial photo of Hyannis Harbor someday, when, when there's nothing in the steamship authority lot. It's a huge parking lot. And then you have open space where Alzeltown Park and Bismarck Park is. There's not a lot left to develop here on this, on this property, along the harbor. Somebody said, you know, everybody will be coming in looking for waivers. There's about two parcels that might be coming in here looking for a waiver to develop something where the anchor, anchor inn is. And I think there's one other piece in between us. Other than that, the town pretty much has control, or there are condominiums, or private businesses, or private homes, or open space. All, all the open space is owned by the town. You've got the Maritime Museum, and then, and then the two parks I just mentioned. So, yeah, there will be change in this area. Most will be across the street. The only impact on this is, on the harbor is, is when you come in, as somebody said, you know, it'll, it'll be kind of a beautiful change for the image of downtown Hyannis. This is a, these are spectacular-looking buildings. It sets a tone. If we're going to go to eighty-five feet in the, in the hospital district, sixty feet, sixty-six feet in the downtown village district, fifty feet in the downtown neighborhood district, that's all right here within this neighborhood. And this building will set the tone for what others will need to live up to. I've heard people say that, you know, this is all about the money, and Mr. Bornstein simply wants to, to cash out and make as much money as he can. Nothing could be further from the truth. He wants to build signature buildings for, for downtown Hyannis. If he wanted to cash out, he'd go with a sixty-six, or sixty or sixty-six units, I forget the number, that we showed you that he could do as of right. It is a much less expensive build, and he can make more money doing that as of right project. This is a risky, bold venture by Mr. Bornstein. He's investing sixty to seventy million, who knows what it's going to be with the way the economy's going, in the east end of Hyannis. We ask that you take a bold step yourselves and support this project. Vote in favor, recommend that the town manager sign this, and pass this on to the town council. For those who are concerned about the, you know, Hyannis Harbor study, if it's going to be voted on on the twenty-fifth, the town council will have it in front of them. They'll have an opportunity to review it. If they, if they deem it necessary, they can always send it back to you. So, it's not like this is being rushed through and we need to wait. This project's been hanging around forever. As I stated, this is a very bold step by Mr. Bornstein. He believes in downtown Hyannis. We ask that you believe in him and vote in favor of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Appreciate your comments.
I was hurt that nobody clapped for me before.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for that. So, at this time, I want to go to the board. I just want to start by kind of clarifying something, you know, remembering that this is a, you know, negotiation per se. The time to, you know, kind of ask the applicant to make a change or ask for something is now, while the public hearing is open. I don't want to close the public hearing and then have a conversation like that. The time to do so is now. You know, if someone on this board is saying that, you know, I can't vote for something over three and a half, the time to say that is now and ask for that. If someone on this board, for example, wants to say that, you know, the affordable threshold needs to be twenty percent, where we sit at about seventeen percent right now, the time to say that is now, and let's have that conversation while the public hearing is open. All right? So, I'm going to start with you, Matt, and we'll work our way. And this is not us deliberating. This is us continuing the public hearing and discussions with the applicant.
Yeah, the only modifications or requests I would have would be to establish the building heights in writing, which I think there's a draft that has the building heights and state that they're measured from the average grade plane. And I think I stated before, I would, I would support the six off-site units as in lieu of cash payment. Other than that, I have no issue with the proposal.
Thank you, Matt. Mary?
Thank you. So, just a little history. I would love to see something at that site. It's been a little bit of an eyesore for a long time. My personal feeling is, is that I've been through three of the four of these events that have come through, and my standing has always been the same, which is, the site requires something that fits with, with the neighborhood. So, for me, specifically answering Steve's question, what I would like to see is, is drop this a story to three and a half stories. I could probably live with that. I do have issues with the fact of the traffic and, you know, following the process. I think somebody had said, "This is an either-or proposition." In my mind, it's not an either-or proposition. This is a negotiation. And I don't feel like, the board should feel like this is, if we're not going to do, accept this, we have to accept something else. That's not my understanding. My understanding is that this is a negotiation, and we should be looking out for the best interest of Hyannis, specifically the neighbors in that particular area. I think this is a scaled-down version will elevate Hyannis, as people had said a number of times. And it probably would be best for Hyannis in general. So, again, I would be happy with dropping this down to three and a half stories and the equivalent in height as well, as, and not just for the frontage, but for the entire building. So, that's where I, I'm So that's where I'm coming from. I'll leave it. I'll pass it off to Ray.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and appreciate the transparency. We'll kind of work through the board and get a sense where we're at, and then give the applicant a chance to respond, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let's be clear. We are considering and voting on the proposal at hand, not on some alternative. And I strongly believe Mr. Bornstein has the town's best interests in mind, and I think anything that he does on this site will be guided by that concern. I want to be very clear about that. I do not think that Mr. Bornstein, you're in the business of cutting your nose off to spite your face. Having said that, we have a proposal right now. Mr. Chairman, I think we need to act on that. We're not going to negotiate it here tonight, and I really don't want to drag out the current proposal. We've already gone through that drill for well over a year. Okay? So we've already had the opportunity to do this once. And yes, it's a negotiation, and I think my colleagues have made it clear that it's too big, too tall, and although the definition of density has changed somewhat, if you want to talk about parking, that it's too much for the site as currently constituted, at the 4.5 stories. And Mr. Kenny, you've done yeoman work. Yeoman work.
Thank you.
And the bottom line is, what's really changed is just the zoning. The proposal itself really hasn't. I mean, the sweetener was a one-bedroom affordable unit. So I'm of a mind that we should act on this proposal as it's currently constituted, and then if the board finds that it's not acceptable, I think we're making it pretty clear, and we could always, Jim's always a very capable advocate for our views, to say, if you really want to make this happen, here are the kind of changes that need to happen. I think loud and clear is that it's got to be at least a story less. So, Mr. Chairman, I would say we need to cut to the chase and get this done, and then if that entails then going back to the drawing board. Mr. Bornstein, you're a smart guy. You know this area, and you're pretty creative. And I think there's a way around the barn, maybe not as currently constituted, but something I think that you and your creative team can come up with. And I appreciate your commitment to the town of Barnstable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ray. I appreciate that. My view is going to be consistent with my previous view when we had this item. I kind of share Matt's view of this. While I would love for this to be three and a half stories, that topic has come up, and I do want to hear you respond to it this evening because I think that that would get the job done, and I think it would be a phenomenal project. But I do acknowledge the economics of it, and again, I am going to have a similar view as I did last time. So Bob?
Thank you. I join. I think we should vote on the proposal tonight. I don't see any modifications short of reducing the height to three stories or two stories that would result in any further negotiations, which would affect the board's vote. If it's approved, it's approved. If it's denied and a proposal can come back with a substantial reduction in height, then we can look at the new substantial reduction in height in a new proposal. I think we should vote on this proposal tonight.
Got it. Okay. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like my previous board members, I would also like to thank the applicant and thank your attorney Kenny for, you know, going through and working with this board and public comment and everything in the process to date and to, you know, the entire team. I also feel that, you know, the biggest change in this application was the baseline it was being represented against, which is that form-based, sorry, the zoning change to the Hyannis Harbor District. And the application is almost unchanged from the first cycle, with the exception of the one additional, I believe, one, that's the one-bedroom unit is the additional unit in the mix here. In the previous consideration, you know, there was a lot of things, and the goalpost was still, I won't say the goalpost was moving, but the project was developing through that cycle. You know, it had started at, I think, five and a half stories, and then different rooflines were talked about, and there was a crane test, or sorry, where like a genie lift was set up to represent the story height. So a lot of things were kind of, there was ebbs and flows and some gives and takes, and then it kind of had reached a point that, I don't want to say a line of sand was drawn, but it was, here's the application, here's the proposal, you know, that's what it is. That is what is being presented and to be voted on. And I was personally very on the fence at that point because there are a lot of benefits to this project. I want to see a project like this. You know, I want to see projects succeed and bring the positives to different areas of this town that need this help and, you know, can be a driver for this community and for the business and for this town to continue to grow. With all that being said, I think, you know, these regulatory agreements are very tough. It's, I really like using analogies, and, you know, this is us kind of coming up with a recipe and getting the ingredients all together and providing the recipe and the ingredients and everything needed to the town council to kind of decide if they want to cook it and put it in the oven. The problem that I strongly face is, I love everything in the recipe. I love all the ingredients, but there's one ingredient on there that I'm allergic to, and that is still the building height, the overall height. You know, after the first go-around, an effort was undertook to develop the form-based zoning that is, you know, Hyannis, Main Street, South Street, North Street, and everything up to Barnstable Road. And that was a really unique thing in a very kind of progressive zoning move to bring into the town of Barnstable. And I think one of the most important things in that is, we knew we had to increase density, but we had to respect the historic nature of the town. I mean, it is Cape. We're not too dense. We're not too tall. But how do we provide density required for developers to present projects sort of like this, but keep in character and fitting with the town? And a lot of effort was given to exactly what does that fourth story mean? And if we all remember that Form Based Code, the fourth story is really made in that Form Based Code to look like a half-story. The full story is allowed, but it is, you know, the roofline pitches lower down to the third. There are dormers. There are setbacks. So it really encourages that fourth story to kind of be more acting like a half-story and bring the overall scale and the height down. The other thing is with that Form Based Code is, you know, I kind of thought that the fourth story was really only eligible if it was first-floor commercial and then three stories of residential above. I know there's some exceptions to that role and grade changes and parking, but ultimately, we're looking at a project here that is four and a half stories that looks like five and a half stories because it's sitting on a parking pedestal and has natural kind of grade changes. So it feels like a larger project than it actually is, whereas we spent a lot of time and effort to work to have that Form Based Code, have larger projects that look like smaller projects. So that's just kind of my overall thought on how I got to that height. And like I said, every other ingredient of this recipe I like and I think this town needs, but that's one that's still an allergy for me. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Tim. Michael?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the applicant, and thank you. Great job. You know, I remember when this project came to us and the amount of time that we spent reviewing everything. It was very stressful. Now, this is my only opinion. I think, you know, me personally, I feel a little rushed in making decisions. And as my colleagues have said previously, to me at least, I don't see much change from the previous pact that we received. What's most important for me is the public. I listened to all the comments. I had the opportunity to read all the letters from previous and now. Yes, I do agree that this is a beautiful project. I do agree that Hyannis needs change, but two things. Either we vote on this tonight or, you know, refer back to historic commission. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Got it. Okay. So I just wanted to give you a chance, while the public hearing was open, to hear from the board and potentially decide if you'd like to make any changes. If not, we will deliberate and take a vote.
Could I have just two minutes of salt? Thank you.
Yep. Take your time.
Hi. There you go. Hey, I really appreciate the time that everybody's put into this. We started this project a long time ago. In fact, before we even started, we had members of the planning board sit in at the time at the restaurant to help design this project. And they indicated what they wanted to see and how they wanted to see it. Keep in mind, we did have a format of a building that this, the architect's done. And unfortunately, it all costs money to do everything everybody wants. If it could be done in three and a half stories, we wouldn't be here. When we had five stories, and we took off that five stories, we took off almost $12 million of sales, but it still left me with $8 million worth of cost. It's still there. We raised our prices three percent to cover a little bit so we wouldn't be underwater. And we went in with the four stories. The cost of building this is, it's crazy. It's extreme. The bling on it is probably two and a half million. I could think more. The superstructure for everything we're doing, the sidewalks, the roads, the parking lot, the elevators, it's like $20 million. That stays the same whether I got two stories, three stories, or four stories. It doesn't change. It's still there. It's a question of economics. You have 15 projects being built in Hyannis, mostly all four stories on the Main Street. Nothing's bigger than 1,000 feet. Maybe there's a couple that are 1,200 feet, and very few are three bedrooms. They're all ones and twos. That's all Hyannis is getting loaded up with. I predict there'll be 3,000 apartments in four years, and you're going to have, anywhere somebody nice wanted to live, somebody wanted to live in something nice, it doesn't exist. It isn't here. So we're filling up Hyannis with workforce housing at $3,000. I don't want to call work for 3,000. A lot of money. We don't charge that much. We could, but we don't. We got some people in for $1,300 a month. They've been there for 20 years. We keep it the same. That's another story. If we could build it and get it to something look like that, we would build it. We wouldn't be here. But the four and a half stories are what it takes to, a little better than break even. It's crazy. When we lost that fifth floor, nothing changed. Everything was still there. In fact, the town ordered me more crosswalks, more sidewalks on South Street. We converted two bedrooms, one and two bedrooms to three bedrooms. We lost two units that cost the $500,000, which we didn't even talk about. That's another exorption we got. But we're not even charging it to this project. We're charging it to the other project. That's how bad I want to build it. Three and a half stories don't work. It just doesn't work. I wish it did. I wouldn't be here. I've been wanting, not 10 years, 25 years. Our first proposal is in 97. Every time I come in front of you, I pay $7,000 for a regulatory agreement. This time, I got a bargain. It was $6,700 because we only had 29 units. All right? This is what we pay just to get this far. That's just to the town. It's costing a lot of money. We probably spent in excess of a million dollars trying to build this project. This is the end of the road. The other alternative, and you changed the zoning, and this is what you created in Hyannis now, we're going to, unfortunately, what makes money. And this came from the town, says, build what you're allowed. We are allowed to build two and a half stories underground parking, but they're open. It's just an open lot underneath the buildings. 60 units. We could probably squeeze another four or five in there, but we got 70-car parking. I said, let's just have some extra parking. If somebody has two cars, we don't squeeze them. And we're allowed to build that, and I got to tell you, I'm going to make a lot of money on that. It's ridiculous. We ran the numbers, and I won't get into the numbers, but it surpasses by five times. And the money we lay out is a fraction of what we're talking about laying out. This is cash we're laying out. I told the banks what we wanted to do. They almost threw me out of the office. This is, nobody's making this kind of commitment to downtown. When I built the Village Marketplaces in 70, 70, why did I do this? 70-something or other. I mean, nobody ever built anything like this. We didn't have one tenant in there when we did it. We did it on faith. And at the end of the day, the town that was there trying to make it stop, two years later, it's on the cover of the Chamber of Commerce and promote it in all their websites. And they talk about, we have to have nice stores in there. We had the best stores in there. But Hyannis changed, and the best stores left, and the best stores went up to Mashpee Commons. I wanted to put an addition with the Chrysler garages, wrapped the whole thing. We had a whole thing. And the Main Street got upset with us because we fought, and they stopped it on 40-car parking, short. On 600-car parking, they made the 40 cars. They didn't want to understand the people that lived there worked. We didn't need the parking. I've done what I can to try to make Hyannis a better place, and we got nothing downtown for people that want to live in a decent place down here. I get calls all day long, people looking for this, and it doesn't exist. And this is the last chance. Hyannis is going to have something this nice to put to the public, to upgrade the town. This is the end of the rainbow. And I understand the idea of three and a half. If you think eight feet are going to make that much difference on the front of the water, trust me, if somebody's coming in and they're $500,000 and $800,000 boat, that eight feet isn't even going to register. We're three feet, three and a half stories. We can make it three stories if you like, a half a stories inside the attic. It doesn't go up three and a half. It goes three. And it's no higher than what's in front of us. The only time place we got four stories is on the waterfront, and we need that extra story to do a little better than break even on this project. And I wouldn't be saying this, believe me. All right? We have been a good, I think we have sent a lot of money in downtown. We literally gave the Sturgis School to the town. We've done, that Kennedy statue is something we've done. We give away hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and we don't say anything about it. We just do it. And you don't hear about it. You don't read about it in the paper. You don't see it. We just do it as good citizens, and I don't look for any things. But to lose this project, this is a shame. I really mean it from the bottom of my heart. It took me 85 architectural firms to find somebody that could do something that came out wow. And you've got to say, you've got to look at it. It's a wow. Where are you going to get a project like this in Hyannis? I'm ashamed of what the 60 units are going to look like. I got to be honest with you because we can't afford to put bling on them. I don't have to do the sidewalks. I don't have to do the roads. I don't have to do the underground water mains, none of that. Okay? We're going to give you four one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms in there because that's what the place is. It's mostly all ones and a few twos, but it works. And I don't like building it, but I've worked 25 years to build something, and God knows the time and the effort, the Saturdays, the Sundays, talking, sitting in his office, drawing things up, beyond money he could charge me. And Mike on vacation on the phone, back and forth tweaking everything. This is not about the money. This is an image for Hyannis, and to lose this, for Hyannis to lose this, shame. Shame. Talking eight feet, and I'll tell you something, in another couple of years, you're going to have everything down here, five stories, six stories. There's no more land. It's going to be. But I guess what? I'm not going to wait any longer. I've 25 years. I've kicked this around. I've done my best. This is what you're going to see. I tell you, it'll be exactly like this. The colors might be a little more grayer, but you're not ever going to see a project like this in Hyannis because nobody will spend the money or take the risk. And the neighborhood I'm building in across the street, it's a pretty rough neighborhood. Take a walk around there, but we're taking the chance and doing it anyway. And you've got to believe it from the bottom of my heart. And I understand everyone's three and a half stories. I can't make it work. I really can't make it work. It just doesn't work. There's just a question- There's just a question of economic. Those that are developers that have done it know what I'm talking about. And it's so darn expensive to build today. It's crazy. I'm paying electricians $180, $140 an hour, plumbing plumbers $160 an hour. It's assin', $145 for a yard of concrete. When I started, it was $12. $147 a yard for a yard of concrete. It's cuckoo. And elevators. You know, I mean, we're just trying to do it right. And I appreciate you taking the time and I'm not gonna be mad if you vote it down. I got another alternative. It doesn't make me happy. I gotta be honest with you. I'm not out of spite. It's just what I have to do to make it work. I've spent already a lot of money and time. I'm running out of time. I can't wait any longer. I really mean it. My wife is sitting in the intensive care for two days. I've been with her all day. I'm going back there tonight and I'm sitting here telling you to vote for this thing because the town deserves something like this. They deserve it. To lose it would be a shame. I really mean that. You'll never see another project like this come in front of the town. There's no other place to build it. There's nothing else gonna get developed. A signature project for downtown. Where are you gonna get something like this? You're never gonna see it. You truly aren't. And there are people that want to live downtown and spend the money and get out of their big house and there's no place for them to go. That's up to you to do what you're gonna do. And I thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry I'm a little emotional about it, but believe me, it'd be a shame to lose it. Thank you.
Understood, Stu. Thank you very much for those comments. Appreciate that. Look for a motion to close the public hearing. Attorney Kenny?
Just coming up to my papers.
All right. Anybody opposed to closing the public hearing on the board? Okay. Motion to close.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. We will now deliberate and vote. I did put something together that I would like to read as part of the deliberation. I know it's late. I know I'm going to belabor the point, but they're just comments that are important to me to state because it's been a long process and I just want to get them out there. So first, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank the public. The amount of public comment, both in the forms of emails, letter, in-person public comment, was tremendous. We've received comment in favor. We've received comment against excellent points both ways. Also want to take a moment to thank the applicant for the concessions that were made when this project was originally proposed last year for the first time. It started five and a half stories with three affordables. We currently sit at four and a half stories with six affordables. While I do wish more progress was made, I do appreciate these concessions. And I do understand and appreciate the costs associated with a high-end project of this size and caliber. I do think we all need to keep in mind that if we don't approve this agreement, we've been told we will likely see the construction of a 60-unit, two and a half-story development. I'm not saying this as if that's a bad thing. I actually don't mind the 60-unit proposal, but personally, I would choose this regulatory agreement if I had to choose between the two of them. In my view, the applicant did not inform us of this 60-unit project as a threat. I don't see it as blackmail. I don't see it as a threat. To me, this is transparency. As a board member, I would prefer to know what the applicant planned to do as their Plan B or Plan C. I personally think that information is relevant. I think it's transparent and I think it's important for the decision-making process of a board such as this. There's been many past proposals from other applicants that I know myself and the board would have loved to know what Plan B, Plan C might have been before we made our decision. I feel I have to point out some irony from some of the concerns relating to this application. The irony in the situation, many concerns have been related to the size and density of the 29-unit dockside project. I've heard concerns about density, concerns about parking, concerns about congestion, traffic, general amount of activity around the site, and concerns from a buster, a butters regarding overflow parking. Every one of these is a legitimate concern, but I think that, you know, we should think about these in relation to, you know, what could be for a 60-unit project. If we think these are concerns for development with 29 likely seasonal units, do we think that these concerns will be better with a 60-unit project? Of course not. It's clear and obvious that all of these particular concerns will be far worse if there's a 60-unit project that has more than twice the number of units. I do want to take a moment and talk about the historic commission. I think Cheryl has left, which is a shame. Hopefully she watches the video. I'd like to first stop to recognize, commend, and applaud this commission for their work recently on the proposal for 307 Main Street. If anybody were to look at these plans and renderings before their work and after their work, I think that we would all appreciate the work that they put in. Their work on that project was phenomenal and I was personally very impressed by their efforts. I mentioned this because there had been a lot of comments about the design and aesthetic of the 60-unit proposal. Let's remember that even though it is by right, it would still need to be deemed appropriate by this historic commission. And I have full faith and confidence in their abilities to ensure that any proposed project in their jurisdiction meets the design requirements. They have shown with 307 Main and other recent projects that they're up to the challenge to take on these and they take these requirements very seriously. Yeah, I mean, I share the concerns about the somewhat dull design of that 60-unit project, but I have to be honest, I don't dwell on those concerns because I know how this commission operates and I know they have the town's back and that they take their job very seriously. I will also state that I fully support the new form-based code, specifically the parking requirements. I personally don't find seas of asphalt parking lots to be the highest and best use of our downtown area. If a unit is offered with one parking spot, this will be part of the decision-making process for someone looking to rent or purchase that unit. For a downtown area, to me, this is not unreasonable. They will make other arrangements for that second vehicle if they own a second vehicle. Both options would include six affordable units. Personally, I like the affordable units that are tied to the 29-unit dockside project. I think of the saying, bird in the hand is more valuable than doing the bush. Those are there for the taking, if you will. Five of them would have three bedrooms for a total of 16 bedrooms. That's 16 heads on 16 pillows, as the six would be a one-bedroom. This is the most important thing to me, affordable housing. The need for three-bedroom units was communicated clearly by Hilda Hay of the town's Housing Committee, who took part in a subcommittee ordered by this board during our proceedings with the first application from last year. From what I've heard, again, like we talked about, these six units would be ready and available within a year or, as we've heard, even sooner. We need affordable units now. This will deliver 6,000 more than 6,000 square feet of affordable living space that we need right now. If you do the math, six units divided by the total number of units, 29 plus 6, which is 35, is 17.14%. I appreciate Jake's comments from earlier. I agree, you know, the current inclusionary is very outdated. 17% to me is a lot better than 10. Is it the answer for the future? I don't know. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I certainly want to see it higher than 10. I'll also state that it is not, it is not the responsibility of the owner of private property to ensure that his or her private property provides views of the ocean for the public. I don't think any of us would respond positively to a member of the public asking us to ensure that our privately-owned land offers them a view of a harbor or body of water. If you want to speak specifically about the view of the harbor from a public way, I will share this. When the Dockside Restaurant was standing, the only view of the water from South Street was looking directly down School Street. If these two proposed buildings were constructed, this view will remain. The view from a public way will also be the same as you work your way down South Street from north to south. If these buildings are constructed, the view from a public way will be unchanged. This is clear to anyone walking the site, as myself and my fellow board members have done far too many times. Regarding the height, four and a half stories is tall, no question about it. And I respect fully my fellow board members who have raised this concern. However, I have to note and can't help but look around the harbor and sight two projects we've talked about. Lewis Bay Court, AKA The Greenery, which also sits at four and a half stories, which was a result of a regulatory agreement. And also the Hyannis Harbor Hotel, which also sits at four and a half stories, also the result of a regulatory agreement. In my opinion, these are both positive examples of an effective use of our regulatory agreement tool that we have here in the town. Both of these are in close proximity to the water. And I just want to state again, this project is not a waterfront project. The Dockside Marina and Steamship Property are on the water and the site of this application sits behind them to the north. Lastly, I will state I support the waiver related to the Hyannis Waterfront Historic District Commission for this simple reason. That committee looked at these buildings with one more story and approved the design. Very, very little has changed. The impact, in my opinion, has been reduced, making it even more appropriate. For these reasons, I support the application, as written. Anybody else want to make any statements, comments, questions before we take a vote?
Steve, do you mind if I hop on?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we deliberated on this application, was it last March? I can't remember when the first one kind of wrapped up when we were all in Zoom world. I actually misunderstood. I thought that a reg agreement could go to the town council with a disapproval from this board. You know, we got to the point again where those lines were in the sand and, you know, I think some of these issues are more than, not to knock our own planning board here, are beyond us a little bit. Especially when we get into, although this board has a great, I think, track record for trying to promote growth where it is needed and also secure affordable housing units. Those are like, I mean, the affordable housing, I think, is our number one goal of this board, you know, from my time on it. And thinking of that, you know, I was hoping that it would go to the town council and there could be maybe some more room and referred back. I look at this board as the doer, do the legwork, vet the project, get, again, the correct ingredients on the board. In thinking about the historic committee, yes, the change in the application from the historic committee perspective is there was one story removed, but the roof line trim and everything kind of stayed the same. And although we get into a little bit of aesthetics here, that's not our, you know, number one kind of purview. That's not our regular song. There was, the reason why this project is in front of us now is because there was a change in the base regulations relating to density and parking. There were also changes to the historic regulations. So the reason why this project is in front of us is because the regulation changes. I think that it could be appropriate for it to go back to historic because the historic regulation changes. If that's what got it here, I think it's only right that it goes there. And although, you know, I have no problem, you know, getting into window trim and color, I mean, that's my professional life, as is Matt's. That's not the necessarily purview of this board. So I could be open for a discussion with all these board members here tonight that, you know, I could be in a position to change my vote to a, you know, to recommend with the condition that it receives a certificate of appropriateness from the historic commission. And then it could, everything can be reviewed in conjunction at Town Hall and I think that's a fully, in front of Town Council, and I think that's a fully vetted project with the amount of work and ingredients and everything that we can put together on that project and it becomes Town Council to review from there. So I'm gonna put that out there.
Yeah, great comments. I appreciate that. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me. First of all, I do want to recognize, these are beautiful buildings. There's no question about that. I don't think anyone really does challenge that, but to the extent that anyone thinks that, anyone up here thinks that these are not beautiful buildings, let me assure you that I think, if nothing else, that these are beautiful buildings. And I think that Hyannis needs beautiful buildings, as does Centerville and Osterville and Barnstable and all the rest of the parts of the town of Barnstable. The, you know, people travel all over the world to look at things. They're going to look at beautiful things. They're going to look at the Acropolis. They're going to look at the Colosseum in Rome. They're going to look at the Tower of London. And I'm not gonna go on with a list of these, but you get the point. People are not going to look at big box stores. People are not going to look at garden apartments. So having beautiful things is a definite plus to have in a community. It's hard to quantify it, but I think most of us would agree it's a, it's a good thing, not a bad thing. Now, I lived in the east end of Hyannis in 1970. East end of Hyannis now is not really frankly, a very pretty place. It needs a lot of work. And I think virtually everyone in the room agrees that it needs a lot of work. And high-quality construction, high-quality design begets more. High-quality construction and high-quality design. And low-quality construction begets low-quality design. We want high-quality design and construction in the east end of Hyannis, in the Main Street corridor, and everywhere else, we're gonna do something in the town of Barnstable. So there's a lot to be said for this proposal because this proposal, if it's built, will drive high-end construction and high-end design. Now, I, like Steve, tonight, when we last voted on this, I spent an inordinate amount of time going through point by point on every argument that anyone made all the way through. And I'm not gonna repeat any of those things because they're all on the record and if anyone wants to read them, you're welcome to do so. I applaud Mr. Bornstein for his willingness to go through and respond to the requests that we've made. As everyone's pointed out, this is, project has been, I don't know, a year and a half, two years. I lost track. And it was once a much builder-built, a much bigger build than it is now. Mr. Bornstein responded to requests from the public and from the board and came back with a number of different designs which addressed the concerns and comments made by the board and by the people. So I certainly commend him for trying to work with everyone who raised concerns. The last proposal, which we voted on, started at one height with one number of units and with one number of stories. And by the end, we voted on something that was, you know, significantly different. But we did vote during the past year. And while this is a new proposal and while there's new zoning in town, which changes the amount of waivers that might be required, the two buildings we're voting on now are the exact same to the one one-hundredth of a foot to the buildings we voted on when this board turned the proposal down. I don't see anything about the buildings in this proposal to suggest that the answer should be any different tonight than it was when the board voted to disapprove the project. The vast majority of people who submitted comments, either in person or in writing, agreed that the buildings had too many stories and that the overall height was too high. I also thought that the buildings were higher than what was ideal. And I think I expressed at the vote last time that I thought the highest and best use was condo buildings, much as these are at two and a half stories, 15 or 16 of them, designed much as they are now. But as everyone's pointed out, including Mr. Bornstein powerfully tonight, that's not possible. The last time, I voted in favor of the proposal. And I voted in favor of the proposal because these two lots have been essentially vacant lots for the past several decades, frankly, with the exception of the Dockside Restaurant, which is, was open part-time until it was destroyed. It was open, I think, four months of roughly of that a year. But for eight months of the year, those lots are now and have been vacant lots. And I hate to use the word eyesore, but they're not attractive. And they don't encourage anything attractive in the east end of Hyannis. I felt at the time that the excessive height and the excessive number of stories above what was required under the zoning was less bad, frankly, than leaving the two properties as they have been for two decades. And when I use the word less bad, Mr. Bornstein, I certainly don't want to suggest anything negative about the design of the buildings. They're very beautiful buildings. But the height is not beautiful at this location. And the number of stories is not beautiful at this location. It now appears with the new zoning in place that there are other viable alternatives which could be constructed and development can go on in the east end of Hyannis at this location and the rest of the east end of Hyannis, which is in fact consistent with the zoning requirement. And as other people have pointed out, this is not a binary choice. And I pointed out the last time, that's not a the last time, that's not a binary choice. Tonight, we have to vote up or down. But I think that there are now the possibility of other viable alternatives which are consistent with the zoning. The two-and-a-half stories and 20, whatever the height is, I forget, was just voted in this past year. It's not like it's old and it's been forgotten. The town council renewed its position as to number of stories and number of heights in this area. With that, Mr. Chairman, I pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to make any comments during our deliberation? Ray, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, again, I think we have put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears about this, and I won't even say both sides. We, as a collective, as a community. I must say that we need to make a decision tonight. We don't need to, in my perspective, we don't need to defer that decision or pass it to another body. We're, we are the body to make the decision. We have posited that maybe we would be amicable to maybe some sort of change, but the applicant has made it clear that it's got to be 4.5 stories. And that's what we have before us, and that's what we had before us before. And the zoning changed, but the project did not. The height is height, and the store, number of stories is the number of stories. And I do think that this will be a profound change to the area. I will say, I think it'll echo what Bob said, great project, wrong place. It doesn't fit it. And equally important is, I think, that we have zoning for a reason, and if we are going to ignore that zoning, then I have zoning. So I have to say that that means, again, we vote this up or down, and then we say, "Let's see what we can come up with. If you want to build by right, build by right, and you have a very talented planning staff to work with." And quite frankly, the alternative may well be a plus in available housing as opposed to affordable housing, but housing that workforce might be able to do a little better. So, Mr. Chairman, I want to get this over with, and I can't see where I've seen or heard anything to change my vote from the previous time.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. Yes, we're working our way towards a motion here. If anybody has anything else to add? Mary, Matt, Michael, anything to add?
Just a quick note. I think I've made myself clear on where I stand on the project. But I did want to say thank you to Mr. Bornstein for the time that you've put into this. As I said, it's come before the board four times. Of those four, I've been here for three of them, and you do, you are persistent, and you've come back with some great ideas, and this is a beautiful building. I just feel like, from my perspective, it just needs to be dropped down a story, and I'll pass it off to...
Well said, Mary. Yeah, well said. Michael or Matt, anything to add before we look for a motion?
Almost had. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Matt, anything?
I think there are certain opportunities we have in this kind of venue, the planning realm and the building realm, and all these issues that you hear about, the affordable housing component, the need to improve Hyannis, the need to maintain our business base, the need to, you know, maintain an attractive space for tourism and those sorts of things. I really don't think that a building like this would be a detriment to the greater Hyannis area. I think it's, I think it's a trendsetter. I think it is an opportunity to create a beautiful space out of what is otherwise hasn't been, right, in my existence here in the Cape. And to forego an opportunity like this would be, would be a great loss, I think, and I understand the concerns on all sides, but look what can be done by rights here, not just the housing stuff, right? I mean, look what can be done by rights. There could be nothing there. I mean, you know, a couple of buildings, like parking lot, you know, like, those are your alternatives. You know, great spot for it. I think the density and the intensity of use are fairly low. I can't tell you how important it is to promote this subterranean parking concept. It has to be done. I can't tell you how strongly I support this. Even at its current four-and-a-half stories, I still feel it's appropriate, given the surroundings. I was there when we did the greenery regulatory agreement 12, 14 years ago. I sat on this board. You know, they struggled financially even to get off the ground. We ended up giving back affordable housing money to them so they could get out from under the project. I mean, we had to add garages. We had to do all this stuff because everybody was afraid that it was going to be too big, too ugly, too, 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 too much of everything. And you drive by it now, and you go, "Oh, yeah, there's, that's the greenery," right? And now you can look at this, and you go, "Jeez, you know, this could be, you know, that view and our new foray into, you know, a more vibrant, you know, harbor area." I think, I think it's such a loss to let this go. I just think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Matt. Thank you. Attorney Kenny, anything to add?
No, thank you. Just thank you all for your time and deliberations.
Okay.
Echo the comments. I think this would be a big loss for downtown Hyannis.
Understood. Oh, what's that?
Public meetings closed.
What's that?
Public meetings closed.
I can just say one thing, if I may, real fast.
Yeah, the public meeting is closed, so we do need to go to a vote.
Yeah, half of this building complex is only three-and-a-half stories.
No, I understand. All right, thank you.
That's the streets.
The public meeting is closed.
Going to go to a, anybody oppose us going to a motion? Nope. All right. I'm going to make a motion. I move to recommend the execution of RA 2023-002 Dockside Residence, 110 School Street and 115 School Street to Town Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
I second.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Nay.
Ray?
Nay.
Bob?
No.
Tim?
No.
Matt? I mean, sorry. Michael?
No.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes yes. Motion unfortunately does not pass. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
I think, if you recall, we then...
No, we don't have to. That was my mistake. Yeah. We're clear, right, Jim, on that? Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, though. All right. Chapter 91 notices, Notice 115 Bay Road, Barnstable, Han, construction to maintain a pier and a float. Another one, Notice 116 Bay Road, Barnstable, McShay, construct to maintain pier ramp and float. Jim, you want to do an LCP update at the next meeting? Is that all right? Okay.
But did they get, just one thing on the LCP. They got new members, right? Or did they...
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Yeah.
They have a list of applicants or new members, or...
Correct. Application process has closed. We've received, I believe, 12 applications, and they are going to be reviewing those applications and doing interviews in the coming weeks with the hope of having someone on, or maybe one or more onboard for the November 30th meeting of the LCPC.
Great.
Okay. Jim, do you have a weekly recap for us?
Sure, I can go real quick. So just...
Yeah, just talk right into the mic so we can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Happy to do so. So over the past week, a lot has been occurring on the regulatory side. As you may have heard, 201 Main Street was approved by the Hyannis Historic District Commission, as well as 307 Main Street was approved. In addition, at the Zoning Board of Appeals, the signage package was finalized for the Kmart Plaza, so you'll see some final installations there. My understanding is floor and decor may already be open. Haven't ventured over there yet. And the two other planning items mentioned here this evening, design guidelines, are working towards the final iteration. We got a lot of great public comments, working with the architect to finalize those and bring them back to both this board and the Hyannis Historic, hopefully for a joint meeting of those two boards, maybe late November or early December, depending on the holiday schedule. And as was mentioned earlier, and I know I did mention briefly at earlier meetings, but the town was in receipt of a state grant to look at the Hyannis Harbor master planning process, so we will be initiating that process. There is a request for proposals out for architecture and engineering firms to assist us in that process, and we will be opening those requests for proposals at the end of the month with the hope of starting up this winter to begin that master planning process.
Just clarification.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Can you just say, what was the meeting that will be a joint meeting?
Yeah, so the joint meeting will be for the design guidelines, the finalizing of the design guidelines, in discussion with the chairs. The thought was maybe it would be best to do it in a joint meeting of those two to review the final iteration that came out of all the great public comment we received.
And that'll be Planning Board and who?
The Hyannis Historic Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Sorry for the...
No, that was great.
These are the same guidelines we've been working on for about eight or nine months, right?
Correct, yeah. The same guidelines, just a lot of great public input and guidance.
All right. Awesome. Look for approval of minutes, the October 16th draft minutes?
Sumo.
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Future meetings, November 13th and November 27th, 7:00 PM. And any comments, questions before we adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I won't be available November 13, but I will be here for November 27.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to give Jim a kudo for shepherding those guidelines through because it was serious cat herding.
Definitely.
Good job.
Yeah.
Well done.
Definitely.
Plus all the walking tours.
Not done yet.
All right. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Matt? Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Meeting adjourned.